We'll move now into the remainder of our agenda, which is filled with action items. Prior to the executive session, we made the decision to move item F up to the top of the agenda to continue our discussion about non-union employee wage and benefits. And so we'll do that now. We did have a discussion, at least one of the council members suggested the time would be ripe to move to a motion and a second. But before we move to that, I have, you'll have to bear with me, there's a number of people that have signed up for multiple and out-of-order agenda items, but we'll make sure we get everyone an opportunity to speak. Item F, we have Sandra and then Guy. So Sandra, if you take the microphone, next to Paul.
Mary, are you allowed in five minutes?
Yeah. I wanted to clarify before we get started with this, that the council rules provide for public comment of five minutes per person. And we also want to remember that the purpose of public comment is for citizens and guests to share their perspective on these particular agenda items. It's not time to comment on necessarily history or staff. Your comments are directed to the council, and share your perspective as succinctly as possible. At this point, we'll allow five minutes per person. Go ahead, Sandra.
Okay. And we're commenting on potential action regarding non-union wage and benefits, correct?
Yeah, and I think the way to reflect that would be a comment on the proposal that the staff made.
And the proposal the staff made was what?
Well, there were four proposals.
Okay, well, I don't have...
So you want to comment on it?
I want to comment on that, but we aren't privy to the same information that you are, and so we do not have the four suggestions. If you wouldn't mind reading the four suggestions before the comment...
Well, we had that presentation at the beginning of the meeting, but I'd be happy to summarize it.
Thank you.
Two basic issues: employee wage increase. The current budget has increased proposed 2% merit and 2.96% cost of living increase for a total of 4.96%. And we're facing increases to our benefit package, notably a health insurance increase of 9.6%, dental increase of 2%, and long-term disability increase of 15%. So our current proposed budget that the Budget Committee is working with reflects the city paying all of those costs. The staff has come to us with a proposal that we make a change and that the staff absorb some of those costs. So one proposal was that the merit increase be eliminated and that the 2.96% COLA increase remain and that the benefit package stay the same. We'll call that number one. Number two, that the merit increase be removed, that the cost of living increase remain, and that the employees pay a 7% of their health benefit where they currently pay 5%. Third, again, eliminate the merit increase, retain the COLA increase, cost of living, and created a tiered system in which employees that were covered, just the employee being covered, would pay the current 5%; the employee and child being covered would pay 10%; the employee and spouse being covered would pay 10%; the employee and children being covered would pay 12%; the employee and family being covered would pay 15%. And right at the end, it was presented that this is the plan that our insurance company will be offering the next time when the current plan expires. So it's something that our insurance company intends to go toward. And the fourth was a proposal that I had asked to have presented, which was that we adopt by policy, city policy on any kind of benefit increases as cost to city, that the first 5% of increase be paid by the city, that the second 5% be paid by the employee, that any costs above 10% to the benefits be paid by, be split evenly between the city and the employees. Does that do it?
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll start with five minutes.
Okay. I'm not sure I agree with any of those approaches. The tiered approach makes the most sense. For the company, my husband works for a good company with a benefit package, and even with his company, the employee isn't that covered, and the family is allowed to buy in into, which is a luxury, actually. If you're out on your own in the private sector, you're forced to go to medical insurance individual plans. And a group plan is definitely beneficial for lots of different reasons. If you, if you, you're less likely to be dropped. I think that it's almost impossible to be dropped, where in an individual plan, you can be dropped if you become sick. There's really no protection from that. Also, I think you're protected to a degree over rate increases where you're not at all in an individual plan. So I felt very fortunate when my husband went to work for a company who was able to offer us an opportunity to buy into that plan. And I think that we have to look at situations like that, and what is happening in the private sector and what we're offering here. And there were some comments which I was alarmed about, and I believe it was a false information. There is one provider, but there are lots of different plans, and the Dow or Hood River, they're not comparable to ours because they're not in the same plan. And these are all information that was brought forward during the last budget process and a matter of public record. Our employees have the most expensive plan available by this provider. Now, this is what I felt last year during the budget process, that this should be looked at. Now, if they prefer to keep the premier plan, I think that the costs have to be shared. And I'm not suggesting that we offer no medical benefits, but I am suggesting that with the increased cost of medical benefits every year, like Tom said, it's not just this year, it's last year, the year before that, the year before that, it goes way back. And this city basically just can't afford to absorb the ever-increasing cost of administration and still keep its rates at a therapate pace fair for what this town has to offer. This is a small town. We're not a self-sufficient town. I don't think that you can compare us to other cities when you're comparing the services you expect to get. We don't have the tax base. And the fact that we offer a better plan than other surrounding cities, and I am totally, I can provide those for you as you could get them yourselves. They're available and a matter of public record. So I don't think telling a councilperson that he's ignorant when he suggests that there are various different plans with this one provider is really the way to go. Thank you very much.
Quite frankly, Sandra is...
Please, please. Oh, you don't want to say more?
I was just going to say, well, I'm getting up here and just...
Can you do one more?
...just asking for...
Okay.
To try to... Citizen, actually, I think Sandra did a very good job of covering many of the aspects of the staff benefits, et cetera. You know, we're, it seems like everybody is marching to more conservative financial decisions, whether it's the private company, city, state, federal. And here we are, instead of marching forward like all the others are, cutting costs, being fiscally responsible, and looking to what is happening in other places. We are doing just the opposite. We're hiring, and we're also, the benefits totally, there are many different plans. And I think that the, if we continue on this, we have to learn how to cut, stiffen our back and look and see what other people are doing that have the means. We have to cut our costs. That's just it. We've got to stiffen our spines and do it. And I feel that only the staff paying 5% is just far under what is advisable at this point in time. Maybe years from now, a person can adjust that, but right now, I think that is just too little. Thank you.
Okay. As I look at the list, I don't have anyone else signed up to speak to this item, although I'll point out, Arnie, you have it signed up to speak to any specific agenda item. So you're raising up four fingers. Does that mean you want to talk to A, B, C, D?
To request for the action items.
So we have eight action items.
Yeah, I want to talk about this this morning.
Well, I'm going to ask you to, you know, to pick one or two, or, I mean, some people have picked six of them, but...
The last one. In my head, A slash H, not comma, so A slash H is to all five of them.
So Larry, you're clarifying that you'd like to speak to all agenda items.
Yeah.
Okay. We will call you forward.
I can, I can get it.
We'll call you forward right now. F, let's go.
In my answer, I think I answered on what I wanted to talk on, you, and I wanted to talk on F.
Uh, let's see. So you're ready? So processality, and you want F?
Yes.
We'll do that for you. Do you want me to number F? Yes, I know. Yeah, you'll be right after Larry.
Larry, I'm saying towards F.
I talked, I already talked to the council earlier about the idea of the wages. What I liked about what was being said by the people, your employees, that we do need to have something, we do need to have change. What change we do, this is what we have to get to. I spoke to the point that you had a package in the salary, you still have that, still package. They got rid of only one piece of a three-piece section of wages. So they gave up what? Do you may remember? What did they give up? Merit. Huh? Merit. So what's left?
So are you asking...
What's that right here?
Are you asking for a repeat of the review?
No, I'm not. I'm like making sure that you guys know what you're talking about.
Okay, let me assure you, we know what we're talking about.
That's, we're sure, I'm just checking that out, Lance. Okay? All right. So you're saying that merit's gone, but still got cost of living, and you still got steps?
No.
No? Why not, Randy? Are you just...
We're not going to turn this into a conversation. If you'd like to make your comment on this agenda item, make your comment. This is not a, this is not a dialogue back and forth, okay?
Respect.
I get dialogue back, that's pretty good, I think.
Did you have further comments?
My belief is that it's good that the city's starting to look at, and the employees are starting to look at change. I'm just saying to you that there's three pieces in the wages, and I think you just need to look more than just at one. Cost of living, steps. And I think that if you move on and keep doing that, then we've got something going. A lot of people are not even getting cost of living. There's a lot of places, they'll get steps. I understand that we don't want our employees to be, you know, poor, to be standing there on the corner, begging for money, but at the same time, everybody's taking a cut. And I think that we, I think across the board, I just don't think merit's the only piece you cut. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany?
I need for City of Cascade Locks. I want to first off say that I appreciate that staff is looking at ways to save the city money. And I agree that there was one way that was not discussed, which was to go to a lesser plan with a higher deductible. This is the absolute best health insurance plan that CIS offers. It's the same plan that the governor of the state of Oregon gets. This is a small town that, and we cannot afford such an expensive plan. Just to put some numbers out there, for example, in last year's budget, I'm not sure what it was in this year's budget, I haven't had a chance to look at it, it was $140,000 for the insurance, which basically adds up to $140 per person in the City of Cascade Locks pays for insurance for the city employees. In my family, I have four people. That means, and my bills are not much more than $140 a month, so that means four months of my bills go to only paying insurance for the city employees. That's not including hers, which was last year, $190,000, which is well over five more months of just what I pay in my utility bills going to one specific item in the city administration. So that means nine months out of 12, I am only paying for two things. My family is only paying for two things. That leaves three months of what you can call leftover money to put towards the utilities. You cannot sustain utilities with that kind of income.
Good. Thank you. According to this, that'll be the last public comment on item F. Next step is for council motion and second.
Brad, your motion to approve option four, the 3.96% COLA, no merit, and option four in the medical insurance policy, which has the employee, the city covering the first 5% of increase, the employee covering the second 5% and the balance being shared jointly between the city and the employees.
Just to clarify, you said, what was the COLA?
COLA, 2.96%.
Okay, there's been a motion. Is there a second? Second? Okay. Motion by Brad, second by Randy. Counsel, how about our discussion? Brad?
You know, I just wanted to make a point that, in fact, the council did look at other possible options for health insurance. At this point, it's not an option because, first of all, in order to get out of the existing plan, we have, and go into a lower plan, we have to have at least 10 people. We only, four of the employees in the city are union employees that are under contract, cannot be changed, their insurance coverage cannot be changed beyond what was covered in the contract. We only have seven other employees full-time because three of the employees that we had previously are now either on contract interim, on contract as a public works director, and we have no fire chief paramedic. So that brings us down to seven, which means we cannot get out of the current plan we are, we are in until the end of the union contract in two years. Then we could look at getting into a new policy without getting out of CIS. CIS, all of the city, most of the cities in the state of Oregon are in CIS because they have the best group rates. But certainly, the council has looked at what options are available to us at this moment, and unfortunately, getting into a lower plan is not a conceivable option.
Jeff?
And there's a question I was going to ask Paul about the internal staff report we had to approve that contract, it was two years. But the other part is, I like recommendation number three, but then also including the 2.5 in with the union kind of fair share, where everybody's paying into that. Where would that lie with the union kicking, the union employees kicking in 2.5% in with this resume, or with this proposed proposal that Brad came up with? Or was that just left out? Because I think it's to include everybody, so everybody's taking a fair share out of it.
Right now, that's not part of the motion.
All except...
If you'd like to offer amendment, you can.
Okay. I just wondered if we missed that part, or is it important?
It's not part of the motion right now, if you'd like to offer that as an amendment.
I'd like to amend my motion, including the 2.5%.
For the union employees?
Union employees.
Randy, you okay with that?
Okay.
So that's now one. Okay, Paul, could you clarify for us, maybe Mary Ann, on the issue of steps was just brought up?
Mary Ann, I left...
I don't understand the verbiage of steps.
Okay, so, and Larry, maybe you can just correct me if I'm wrong here, but typically a step is, and we have it as teachers, I know Larry was a teacher, so I'm assuming that's what he's talking about, but a step is every year of experience, you move up higher on the salary scale just by virtue of having that extra year.
About 1.3% to maybe over 2%.
Okay. So do the city employees have that type of a step?
We have a wage scale that has minimum and maximum, and we can only go that wage. Once you get to that maximum, you can't go any higher. You don't go step.
So unless you're percent, first step then.
So what's up?
I don't, can't answer that without having a look at my wage scale.
Okay.
So...
So there's no steps, it's just a minimum and maximum?
Yes.
Which, Jeff? The financial impacts and savings of this proposal, what is that? I mean, I haven't seen that on paper, so what are we looking at?
So if we look at all, at this proposal, if we look at the very back page of the memo that Sherelle brought to us, by cabin splitting the employer contribution, the savings is $3,752.52. Of all four options related to healthcare, that's the biggest savings to the city. So the savings, then we've added as amendment to the motion, the savings by asking the, or by increasing the employee contribution for union employees, 2.5%. Somebody with a calculator, I'm going to add this up. It's another $1,677.55. By sticking with a 2.96 COLA increase, the savings would be $14,398.09. Anyone have a calculator? So, some rough figures, four, two, four, not quite $20,000.
Not quite what?
$20,000.
$20,000.
Unless someone wants to correct my math.
If you read it out, I'll put it in my phone. Okay. Okay. Mike, you thought it was $828.16.
So I was right when I said almost $20,000.
I want to make a comment of Brad, I think he misinformed the public on this...
Okay, we're not, we're not going to do that comment, but we're just going to go with council discussion right now because we have a motion on the floor.
The union contract can be opened.
So Mark, did you have a comment?
No, I didn't.
Yeah? I'm going to ask you to be quiet. If you've signed up to speak, we'll call you up when it's your turn. Thank you.
Can you ask staff though if that's correct what Brad just said? Because it's incorrect.
Okay, so I will ask to clarify a question, but from now on, I'm going to ask you, if you've signed up, to wait until it's your turn and to let council have their discussion at that side. Yeah?
In the current motion, that excludes the union employees, correct?
That's right. Yeah, there were not, the pay raise for union employees is already established by collective bargaining agreements.
The only thing that does include is the 2.5%.
Okay, so I'll turn now to Paul and Mary Ann. If you could clarify for us, is it possible to choose a quote lesser plan with a higher deductible, or are we locked into it because of the size of the city and the fact that we have a collective bargaining agreement that establishes?
Mary Ann would be the expert on that.
The union contract does specify a certain plan. The only way that that plan can be changed, if you offer them another plan with similar benefits, or the union agrees to open the contract. The union does not have to agree to open the contract, it's up to them. We can ask them to open it, but if they say no, it's no, as far as I've been told from the union.
So this, the plan that we have now is part of the collective bargaining agreement?
Yes, it is. It is listed in their agreement, their union contract, as this plan.
Okay.
And the only way it can be changed is, one, we offer them another plan, similar benefits, and they open the plan, or open the union negotiations again.
Okay.
So there's two options that can create that, but the union, I don't believe, is willing to open from what I have here.
So, and we have an ask, Paul?
No, we haven't.
We have an ask of the union would be willing to avoid their collective bargaining agreement, to accept a lesser plan?
No.
Okay. So, yeah, I think that clarifies that. Yeah, Lenzel?
Just point of clarification, too, from our previous fight. Now, if we were to pursue trying to open the contract, as I used to understand it, that if you open that contract, for example, to discuss benefits, that really opens everything. And that usually you can't open a contract on a specific point without possibly exposing for discussion wages and everything else.
In general, yes, correct.
Yeah, the exception...
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, you're right. That's a general rule for collective bargaining.
Right.
The exception is if the contract has a specific opener clause that allows you to open it for only a specific reason. And my understanding is that ours doesn't. Tom?
I was just wondering what is the cost of living? What is the national cost of living? Do we have that number?
Yeah.
What is cost of living going at right now? In general? Not just what we're asking for, what is the...
When Paul and I figured it, we took the CPI off of LGPI, and we took several different indexes, and this one was according to our region. Each month, it changes. We took an average. We did not just take one month, we took 12 months and did an average.
So you got your number from, what was out there then?
Yes, correct. From what LGPI produces, yes.
Okay.
Publishers, excuse me. Publishers.
And just to clarify for everyone, the cost of living is typically equated as the inflation rate, which is measured by the Consumer Price Index, CPI.
Got that.
Okay. Okay, other comments? Dale?
If I remember what was said, that the current motion represents the greatest savings of those that have been proposed?
I said that, and that's based on the memorandum that we had from Sherelle at the beginning.
Okay.
Tom?
Yeah, so that, you know, for me, what I'm looking to do is head in the right, right direction. I think we've been, we've been letting the lone direction go for quite a while, so I don't want to take it to the employees here on the thing. I do believe we need to head in some direction with them. And as we, as we do that, it doesn't, you know, for me, it doesn't end here, but this is, this is the start for it that we can look into. And for me, the biggest, the biggest issue right now is the, is the health, is the health issue. And it looks like we've at least brought down things... And it looks like we've at least brought down things, you figured out there, 20 grand?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight. So to me, that's a, that's a start on this anyway.
Randy, did you have a comment on steps?
Well, I, I did earlier. We get, you know, answers, but you also look for clarification of the answers too, is, does the city have steps in their payroll or program? Where somebody that's been here two years, just by being here a third year, would make more money? That's a step.
No.
Thank you.
Tom?
So, just one, because I just got this thing. So the, the one we're going on right here was number four, which is?
Last page.
Is this the last page?
Last page.
This page?
That's the one, that's the last one.
Okay. And again, want to buy me that, which one we're going on here? The employees already pay 5%.
That's correct.
Correct, okay. So what are we looking at, what are we looking to do? Hold on one more time, what are we looking to do in here?
Okay, so there's a, there's several different benefits. One is health.
Well, the one, okay, one, okay.
Well, it's, it's all of them. So there's several different benefits. One is health benefit, and we're anticipating an increase of 9.6%.
Okay.
Under this plan, the city is the employer, would pay the first 5% of that 9.6, okay? The employees would pay the next 5%, only that it doesn't go up to 5%, it's 4.6%.
So they're, so now they're, now they'll be at almost 10% then, right?
It's a percent of the increase, not a percent of the total. Okay. All right. And please, and I, I don't know if I could give you what the total percent would be, you know, so. I, I, I'm anticipating that that's what you were going to ask.
Okay, and then that's, so that changes, that may not be as, if we were at 5% of the total, this, and we said we're going to 10, this wouldn't be 10% of the total.
It'd be, no, it'd be the employee paying 4.6% of the increase.
Of the increase.
Which was 9.6%. And you'd, you'd apply that same formula across the board to all the increases. For example, dental is an increase of 2%. The first 5% paid by the employer, employer would cover that 2% increase. But long-term disability being 15%, the first 5% would be paid by the employer, the next 5% would be paid by the employees, and then the remaining 5% would be split 50/50 for a total of 7.5%. Where the employer, 7.5% for the employee.
So, so on three then, the 5%, 10%, the 5% is just flat out, 5%? Or is that 5% above, or is that only paying still the 5%?
Are you?
Number three.
You're going back to?
I'm just going back to number three.
Staff recommendation three?
Yeah. I'm just trying to get some clarification on where we're at here.
That's, that's the tiered plan that you spoke of favorably earlier tonight, and that's a plan where depending on the employee's family status, they would either pay the current 5%, 10%, 12%, or 15%.
And that's of the total? Or is that of the, the raise? Is that of the total?
Mary Ann, is that of the total, or is that of the increase?
That's the total.
Of the total.
Of the total.
So why wouldn't that be higher than?
I think the answer.
Shouldn't that be higher than this one then?
Uh, I think.
This one, $17,000.
I think that. Okay, your answer to shouldn't that be higher would lie in the chart that was provided here on the second to last page. That's, that's titled Staff Recommendation Three.
What was I saying, just got, just got the thing.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, so we're, where we are on it.
So if you look at the bottom here, Tom, here's the number of total segments. And that's for, that's for Staff Recommendation Three, here approach.
So the savings over here is $17,000.
I'm not sure where. Where is your rate for $17,000?
That's what Sherrell commented.
Sherrell told us.
That's including the?
That's including the wage increases.
The merit.
Remove the merit increase and keep the COLA, 2.96 COLA.
Oh, okay, so this part here is all we're talking about the insurance.
That's right, yeah. It says health insurance savings there.
And between the, between the COLA and $2,000 in savings, what the city's going to get on their, that's, that's, that's the save, health savings for the city, these three grand.
If you went with Staff Recommendation Three, which is not in this motion, but if you did, it would be $3,291.32. And join that with a $14,398.09, I think you might arrive at your $17,000. Further comment or discussion? Mark?
Yeah, correct me on the, Catty, I think you said something about on Plan Three, Tier Five, that in 2014 with the Obamacare, that that's automatically going to happen anyway? So I was just wondering how would that affect the last, the plan that we were looking at, the last plan? Would that?
The question that should be addressed to Mary Ann, but what we were? Go ahead.
No, I'm not understanding the question.
Well, somebody had said that in 2014, that Tier Five on Plan Three, they were automatically going to go that route anyway because of Obamacare.
So how is option four?
Is that correct?
Option four, in, in my understanding of option four, is that we still continue our 5%. Is this not correct? Plus what we're doing is we're, we're paying more of the increase. We still pay our 5% plus 4.96 plus 7.5 of the long-term disability. So we're actually paying more than our 5%.
Okay.
On four. The tiers are, are not taken into consideration here, because it, it's a 9.6%. What CIS gives is, is not per tier, it's, it's a percentage increase right now, because they're trying to make the tiers have not much effect, so they're just doing it overall right now until 2014.
Okay.
Then you'll see the tiers increasing probably at that point, but right now, they're trying to make the cities not have as much increase overall, adding two more tiers, is what they're trying not to do.
Okay.
And that's why they just made it to general 9.6% and not per tier.
Okay.
But you might see that in 2014, I don't know.
So I, and I want to just speak to the, to the motion too, because I, I do support it, but the reason is, I'm looking at, I mean, at a couple of options that would address this budget cycle, but I'm looking at long-term planning for the city, because I think it's, it's just prudent to recognize, health insurance costs are going to be going up, benefit packages are going to be going up, and I think the city needs to have that, a policy of how do we approach that? Either we continue to pay all of the increases, as we've chosen to do over the last several years, or we change direction, and we ask the employees to share those increases. So I think that that's what this gets us to, is, yes, there's going to be changes in the benefit packages. There's changes in benefit packages every year for just about every employee or employer group. But how do you, but, but how does the employer address the percent increase every year? Do you continue to pay it and absorb those costs? Or do you ask your employees to share the cost? Or do you just give it all to the employees to pay? So I, the reason why I support it is because it sends us on a trajectory of having a plan for how we're going to pay increasing health insurance costs, which are a reality. Yeah? Tom?
Yeah, I, for me, I, I need more time on this, frankly, to get this tonight, you know, so that's where I'm at on that. I was thinking a little while.
Me too.
Yeah. Oh, you too. So we probably should take more time on this.
Well, I've just, I've been looking at it because we knew it was part of the budget, and either we, we approve the budget as it exists, or we make adjustments that save the city money. And I think that's what we're tempted to do, is make an adjustment that saves the city money.
Well, sure, I think it's, I think it's prudent to know, to feel good about what kind of adjustment you're making here. And right now, right now, just getting it tonight is hard, hard for me to think.
Understood. Yeah?
Between the option four, that's the current motion, and the option three, which is the tiered, the current motion saves, what, 20 grand?
Ninety-eight.
Roughly, yeah. And, and the tiered, according to these statistics, stays, saves about 18 grand. And my, my bias is I still think the tiered is more equitable, even though we don't save as much. So that would be my preference.
And I would argue there's different, different ways of looking at, at what is equitable. The way I, the way I would approach with the current motion is increases are split, cost to employer, cost to employee, that's what I look at as equity.
Okay, I understand.
They're being equitable. And I think you're looking at each individual person, what they pay and what they use.
Per, for the benefits they receive.
Okay, further questions or comment? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. I'll repeat the motion, which was to approve the, the COLA increase, but no merit increase, and to adopt option number four, which is the, the split of all increases, and the amendment was to, to add, add the 2.5% increase to the union employee contribution. Frank, although.
I gotta ask, I still gotta ask another question. If we're saying we're going to add that to the union employees, I mean, we are faced with opening the contract?
No, that's not, because the union contract includes a provision that we can increase up to 2.5% per year, up to a total of 10%.
All right, thank you.
So we'll not reopen the union contract, okay? So that's the motion. Without further comment or question, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Motion carries.
So.
Would you like to?
Sure.
To talk about why you voted no?
Yeah, I would just say, just, just getting tonight is, it takes me more time to, to get through this. I appreciate you. Yeah, but I'm not sure, that's how we should.
Dale, did you want to say why you voted against?
I already did, I just prefer the.
Okay. Okay, we'll move now to, you, you're good, okay. All right, we'll move now to what's listed as action item A, which is to approve Resolution 1235, establishing internal payments, the rate of 6% for the enterprise funds to be paid to the general fund, and repealing Resolution 1194. Paul, I understand you have a staff report for us, is in our packet?
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor, members of the city council, you had it for you. Item number four, A, in your packet is the staff report, a copy of Resolution 1194 that was approved in June of 2010, that established the internal payment rate at 5% for the electric department, water, sewer, hidden TV, and broadband internet. Also in your packet is a copy of Resolution number 1235, that proposes to raise that internal payment amount to 6%. And then you have the chart that shows you various rate increases for those services. So at 6%, you would see an additional $21,690 approved to the city budget. Mary Ann ran some additional numbers. In doing our research, there, cities are moving everywhere from 3% to 4% all the way up to 10%. So I'm glad to answer the questions you may have.
Thank you, Paul. And we'll move now to comment on this. We have six people who signed up to speak, some interesting time, we'll ask that you listen to each other's comments. If you can keep it brief, please do. And if you've heard that someone else has made the same comment you'd like to make, feel free to say that without repeating the comments. First up will be Tiffany.
Back when this was voted on in 2008, there was a very heated discussion on whether this was to be still, we changed the name to call it an internal payment, so that it would no longer be called franchise fees, so that we could go around the citizens, devote it to citizens, on asking whether or not that they should, we should do this rate The problem is, is that it is, it is an increase. It's taking more money away from the funds that are already hurting, and it is a double taxation on, to the citizens who own the utilities, who own the property, so the, the citizens are being asked to pay this, and on something that they already own. When this discussion was had in 2008, also, there was a reason for it. It was to pay for the ordinance enforcement. I see nothing in the memos or in the resolution to suggest what the purpose, why, why is this happening? What is the purpose of this rate increase? And I, just the only other question I would ask is, you know, when is it going to stop? Is it next year going to go up to 7% and the next year 8%? I think that there should be an explanation as to why this is happening.
Just before we move on to the next person, Tiffany, I will, I will make an explanation. Debbie.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Kauter, and I was under the impression that this increase was going to help our city. And the way I think that this would help our city is by keeping our paramedics, because there is no way that we would have any coverage of all, if anybody gets sick, anybody had a heart attack, a stroke, anything, how would they get to the hospital without an ambulance? That's what I want to know. Because I myself have medical problems. My husband has just found out that he has high blood pressure and high cholesterol, and I don't have transportation, and there's no way that I would have any way to get anybody to get my husband to the hospital, to drive there, if I could find somebody to drive there, and to know for sure that it was in the right place. And so we need that increase to help pay for paramedics. Thank you.
Martha?
Are we on C or B?
I think I would have just.
I'm in.
Oh, well.
That's, that's my, I was saying.
I'll wait.
I'll change it.
So we'll move to Virginia.
Okay, and I want to talk about B.
So you didn't, this isn't the name?
No, yes, I, I guess you changed the letter, but I want to talk about.
Okay, I've got to down for B. Sandra?
This year during the budget process, we have proposed to us, in the budget, two $300,000 studies, and I agree that they're necessary. You're supposed to have a water rate master plan, a water master plan, done every five years, and it's been since 1998. But nonetheless, these are very expensive. They're $300,000 apiece, and these are going to be taken out of our water and sewer departments, which if anybody's looked at the budget, you can already see, we don't, we, we've already run these departments into the ground. And at the time, at this time, even though this doesn't represent a direct rate, a direct increase to the citizens, it does. increase to the citizens, it does create a burden on particularly the water and the sewer department. And by doing that, we're going to have rate studies, and it's going to increase eventually, it's going to impact how much our rates are increased. And we're due for big rate increases for both our water and sewer. We're behind eight ball. We haven't made improvements on those things in a long time. And so it's gonna happen. But to put this additional burden on these departments at a time when we already have these extraordinary expenses coming out of the budget this year, it's inappropriate. I did read in the audit that the cost of providing our services has gone up three hundred thousand dollars, but the revenues from those services has gone down a hundred thousand dollars. That's significant, because we're talking now about increasing that burden. And our, our utilities can't afford it. And I believe that whatever increases are made to the citizens should be kept at a minimum. We've had people be, say some things that are, to me, very insensitive about the financial circumstances of a lot of people in our community, like five dollars is nothing, and that's too late. Well, there are people who have never had an expensive coffee in this town. They count pennies, not dollars. They choose between food and medicine. And for our council to sit here and not even consider the circumstances of these people when they're making these decisions is irresponsible. And I hope that you will reconsider. Thank you.
Okay, that's access to Larry.
Yeah, words been said, I agree.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else signed up for that particular agenda item? So we'll move now to motion and second. Brett?
Make a motion to, by resolution, amend resolution eleven ninety-four, section one, to read, internal payments from enterprise funds will be set at seven percent of sales and will be transferred on a monthly basis to the general fund. The rate will remain in effect through June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, after which time rate will become five percent.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I ask, what you said the date was remain in effect till which date?
Until through June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen.
Okay, there was a little bit of a disruption when you were making your motion, so allow me to restate it. I'm not sure I caught the middle part, but you're talking about amending by resolution eleven ninety-four.
Eleven ninety-four, section one.
To increase the rate to seven percent?
Correct.
And for that to be for a period of time of two years from July?
Two years. And then we'll return to five percent.
What was the period of, what was the period of time?
From July one through June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen.
Okay. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Counsel question, comment, or discussion? Gail?
I don't know if it's been explained what's attempted to be accomplished by one or more of these resolutions being passed. And at least for myself, the intent was, given the emergency service task force recommendations to address funding for fire EMS, full-time paramedic, and increasing ambulance fees. And, and, and I support that. But my bias is the ambulance fees, I don't have a problem with. And my bias for targeting specific funds for the full-time paramedic would be through increasing the meter fees, not changing the interfund charges that currently exist. And, and my concerns with that is, one, if it's seven percent, just rough numbers, that increases the burden on electrical of twenty-four thousand, increases the water to three thousand, increases sewer to seven thousand, increases CATV three thousand, and South Bank for six thousand. And without having went through their budget and finding out how those funds could be shifted, I'm choosing not to support that particular motion.
Yeah, you bring up a good point, and I did tell Tiffany that I would, that I'd explain why, why these are coming to council now, so thanks for reminding me of that. We've talked about, for close to a year now, we've talked about fire EMS, without rehashing too much of last year. We did have difficulty in the fire EMS department last year, to the point that we were no longer able to provide that service. Subsequently, this council's taken under the task of rebuilding the department. Several steps have been taken, including the creation of the public safety task force, which conducted a lengthy process, over fourteen meetings, two town hall meetings, a citywide survey, and then made a recommendation to council, which we unanimously accepted. And then part of that recommendation was to hire a fire chief who would hopefully be a paramedic. And what we don't have is, in our existing budget, the funds to accomplish that. So right now, we have a proposed budget for the next fiscal year that is looking at a part-time fire chief and no paramedic. And so council is looking at options for either generating revenue, or reassigning revenue, or making administrative adjustments that would, would allow us to fund that position, which we've heard from the community is something they want. And so these are attempts to, to address that need financially. And this is, this just happens to be the first of, of a series that we, you'll see on our agenda. Hope that clarifies the purpose of this. Gail?
Can you clarify the administrative, that we're acting under administrative procedure?
Yeah, I think so. I think what you do is, is you look at, you know, existing payments, existing fees, and you administratively adjust those. Okay, that's a, that's an administrative adjustment as opposed to raising taxes, or, you know, creating some kind of new fee, which is, which is legislative.
Which would require a vote.
Which would require a vote. Okay. Tom?
Yeah, it's, when you look at the whole list of items on here, there's just, there's several revenue gathers, or not paying the bills, or, you know, however, however it is, there's, it's, it's beast, it's beast, it's beast, it's beast. And for us, for our departments and all, I take a little piece out of it. Sometimes we look at a partner, or look at something, we say, oh, we took a little piece out of that thing. But when you go piece, 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 and you put them all together, each one of those things may went, was a piece to something, for somebody, and yet for the citizens, they're paying the whole thing. They gotta pay the whole thing. All the pieces put together is gonna be paid by, by the citizens. So that's what's gotta happen to them. They gotta come, they gotta come up with this. And my problem is, I, I worry, and I worry that, because, because what I see of the history in here is councils letting their departments run muck financially. And so I worry that, that we could give them as much money as you want running here, and head ourselves down into more debt in this thing, and let our debt go, and we're gonna be addressing this again down the road. Because we're, we're gonna get this money, and then we're gonna go, boy, we got all this money, and let's, let's go, let's go get rid of it. We have not shown, and we have been, in my opinion, fiscally responsible. So I have an issue with, with all of this stuff. So for me, I would just assume, come up to the citizens and say, you know the situation out here, and you know how things are running, and you wanted to be involved in anything that raises. We got, we got an election coming up real quick here, put a referendum out to them and say, and, and make your argument, make your argument, what you need it for, what you need them to go for, and just come up with a number and say, there it is, that's what, that's what we need to, to pay this stuff, instead of playing this game of all these, you know, piece this, piece this, piece this, and then, and then go out and not, along with that, though, you gotta show that you're managing things right. We haven't showed, frankly, we haven't showed that we've managed our, our things right. And along with that, it wasn't that long ago, everybody was telling us, everybody, all councils, all the people telling us, we were in great shape financially. Everybody was saying we're in great shape financially. Well, we were. And now here we are, saying that we're, saying we're in a hurt. Well, we're gonna be, we're gonna say we're in great shape financially again because of this, and I'm just, I, I'm afraid we're gonna be in a hurt again. I want, I want us to get our act, I want to get us, our act to make it obvious to the citizens that we've got our act together financially, and then go to them and say, and I think that's very sellable to them. But to me, I don't think we've shown that we've got our act together financially. So.
Brett?
Any one of these I have our time with.
Okay, well, beans, it is my motion, I thought I should probably, to the best of my ability, explain what I believe the goal of the council is. First of all, our fire department is in a situation where we currently do not have a fire chief or a paramedic, and we do not have sufficient funds to do that. We're currently losing over sixty percent of our ability to generate revenue. Most of the calls, we have a great ability right now to generate expenses, because we go out on calls, and then we're unable to bill because we have no ALS capability. Just like when you build a business, when you start out, you have to invest in your business in order to get your business into a point where it's self-sustaining and financially solvent, and you're, have an ability to generate revenue. Being a business owner, I know that. I certainly had a lot of years when I invested in my business and just hung on. Our plan is, first of all, one of the primary problems for the fire department over the last several years is the fact that we do not, we're using projected revenues in order to fund our fire department as we move forward, which are not always predictable, and there is a long timeline. Most of our, all of our enterprise funds have a starting balance, and they have operating capital. That's the primary problem with our fire department. We've had several studies that, that have shown that the fire department has an ability to generate revenue, but we're at a point now where we have to get a beginning balance. So the goal is to properly fund the fire department and get the resources it needs so that it can become self-sustaining and be a viable business model. We've gotta get there. And that's why this proposal is for a short period of time, to get the fire department on its feet, get a beginning balance, so at the beginning of the next fiscal year, we will have not projected revenues, we will have revenues that we have, have in the bank that we haven't had to use to fund the fire department at the beginning of the year. So.
Jeff?
I think the biggest thing out of this is, well, twofold, twofold. We talked about it a couple different times, and I talked about it as the contract cascade locks, and that this going for two years and having a sunset, and it going, reverting back forces the next council, and then everybody involved in this, to have a conversation, and how are we gonna do this? We need to have it now. People have spoken, they wanna have a chief fire paramedic. They wanna, if they get in an accident, they wanna know that you're gonna, something's gonna show up, and they, they will have their life saved. They, that's what they want, that's what the citizens wanted, that's what we heard. We can laugh, we can look at people, give scowls, that's fine, but that's what the citizens talked about. It's okay. We can sit there and talk about this, but if you look at the general fund expenditure sheet that Paul put out, and I'm sitting here looking at this, in about twenty sixteen, expenditures and revenues zero out, and then it goes in a downhill slide, and then we're going sideways. This gives the opportunity to correct and move forward and have what the citizens talked about, fire EMS with this long public process. How many meetings, how many meetings on the public process?
Fourteen or fifteen.
Okay. So that, that is the only reason why I support this, because there's a sunset. So it's not taxation, and then it's gonna keep going, it's gonna stop, it'll stay right in there, it reverts back to the original percentage, twenty, I'm sorry, June period of twenty fourteen. That's, that's why I support and like this part, like this way to do this.
Randy?
I actually just wanted Brad to explain why he put the sunset clause in there when I had my hand up.
Oh, okay. Gail?
Well, if, if the plan of the council was to pass each of these funding alternatives, what's the total about the new net new money that was gonna be received? I mean, I, I, I support the idea that we need dedicated revenue to support fire and ambulance and a paramedic, as long as part of that funding includes an administrative person to do billing. But I don't know, you know, that likes being suggested currently with the, with the seven percent, that's forty-three thousand. And in my mind, I thought we'd need about a hundred thousand for the beginning of the year, but I thought with meter fees and ambulance fees, we'd achieve that. So I don't know why we need all of them, or even what the total of dollars are if we were to pass all of those.
Well, I mean, I can, I can address that a little bit. If you look at the back, I think you did look at the back page of, of section four A, it gives the, it gives the revenue picture that would be created by this motion.
Right.
If you look at the, by this motion, and if you look at the, the total package, what you see is an opportunity for council to fund the recommendations that the public safety task force has created. Okay? One of, one of the concerns, though, is if you look at raising ambulance fees, okay, and our budget is currently based on the existing ambulance fees, and you might get some change, but we don't know at this point what fees we're gonna be able to find. We don't know what our department is. So I'm definitely opposed to the concept of trying to base a budget on projected revenue. I mean, it was two years ago, that's what Tom explained to me his, his position, that the part of this process, part of the, the trouble that we're getting into when we start looking, you know, nitpicking the, the fire department budget, is that every year, we base that budget on projected revenue. And that's revenue that is, that is primarily generated by ambulance calls, also fire department calls, but primarily ambulance calls. And well, what we've learned over time is that those projections are, you know, sometimes accurate and sometimes not, but they're based on a medical billing process, they're based on insurance companies being willing to pay. I remember one, one bill that we got back, it took four years from the time we built it. Okay, so, so I'm gonna, and I've said this from the beginning, in the public meetings that the public safety task force had, and I'll, and I'll say it again, I think it's irresponsible for the council to continue the process of basing the fire department budget on projected revenue from ambulance billing. We need to get this department back on a sustainable financial track. Okay? The way to do that is to, to, you know, follow through on the recommendation of the task force, hire a fire chief who's also a paramedic. And I agree with your suggestion that you hire somebody who can do billing, although I'm not sure that it can be accomplished with, with the, the number that you're suggesting, we'd have to look at that. But that we get this department for at least the next two years off of projected revenues. And when you look at other departments our size across the state, that's what they do. That's what, you know, that's what we've learned, is that, is that, you know, these fire departments that are our size, that have one, two employees, are generated by real dollars, not projected revenue. Now, I don't, I think after a period of two years, you could be able to look back and say, okay, well, we fully funded this department, what's the revenue they've generated? Over that time, you look at that number, and then you can make a determination at that point about whether you wanna proceed with. whether you wanna proceed with funding based on what we hope to take in in the next fiscal year. I think part of our problem, where we're at now, why people have questions about fire department budget, is that we've continued to, to base our budgets on these projections. What this would do, and what, what several of these motions would do, or what several of these resolutions would do, is we take it away from projected revenue, and we put it into real revenue, that we know where the city will be taking in, and we'd be able to fund that department and hire that fire chief paramedic as the citizens have said that they want, as this community needs. Yeah?
But I don't know if we can look at these serially, that's my issue. I mean, if the sum we're looking for is a hundred thousand dollars, of course, how can we get a hundred thousand dollars? But if, but if we were to approve all of these, how much is the total? I don't wanna have to add them up.
Well, I mean, I think, that's what I'm trying to explain. I don't think, if you look at the, the, if you look at the, if you, if you look at the, what you call the meter fee, okay, that's real money, we could look at what that projection is, it's fifty-three thousand. But if you look at the ambulance, the, the adjustment to the ambulance fee, you don't know what that's gonna be, because again, you're back in, you're back in the territory of projected revenue.
But we also have on here to change the repayment of the, of the loan.
Right. So if you take the change of repayment of the loan, you know, depending on what the motion is on that, it could be anywhere from forty-six thousand, revenue available in the general fund, to thirty-six thousand to twenty-three, if any of those motions were made and passed. Okay? So then you look at the ambulance, which I, I mean, the way I look at it is, why, why base your budget on something you don't know if you're gonna get? What, what, you know, what we learned from, from the last council, if anything, is when you destroy a fire department, you can't count on them generating revenue to pay the bills. So, so the other thing is, I'm gonna encourage everyone in the audience to wait and let our council conduct business. If you've signed up, we will allow you to speak. But if you can't control your impulse, we're gonna ask you to leave. Okay? So, so I did, so, so you look at that, I mean, I, I just think it's, it's silly for us to continue with this, with this projected revenue. So you, so I wouldn't have.
I agree, I agree with that part.
Then you'd look at the, at the, at the fifty-three for the, the meter fee, and you'd look at this.
Why fifty-three? I mean, one, one scenario I saw was seven dollars, bringing, what, seventy-six thousand?
Oh, that would be seventy-six thousand? Yeah. That would be a, a change in ordinance, yeah. But that's not even on the agenda, so.
All right.
So, I mean, you can, you can look at those figures, yeah. But, I mean, that's, that's in our, our package. But if you're talking about trying to do a wholesale motion on multiple resolutions, I just don't think that's, that's a process that, that we can accomplish in a city council meeting. You, you have a motion to pass one resolution at a time.
All right, I'm ready to vote.
I'm just curious, what destroyed the fire department?
You brought it up, you said it destroyed, that's what I'm curious, what, what destroyed the fire department?
Yeah, I, I prefer not to engage in that type of a discussion, because, I mean, I'll take a short answer, Tom, but if you wanna argue for the rest of the night, we have a bigger agenda. Now, if you wanna talk about it on, on the break, I think that's an appropriate time for us to discuss it, but it's not really related to that.
Well, you brought it up, but you're in public, I assume you don't wanna everybody know what destroyed it.
Yeah, 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 okay. I did say, I did say, I've already answered that question. Do you have something about this motion?
Yeah, yeah. Again, the projected revenue, that's what's been happening to us, was we project things, and, and then we go spin, we go and spin, spin, spin things. That's what's, that's what's happened to us, is we've got lots of money, we got lots of money out there we owe, we have a, and I don't know that much about things, but I know talking to them, when you go get a loan, you get, there's, there's debt ratios. I don't know what our debt ratio is, but I, I'm assuming our debt ratio can't, can't be very good, because we got lots of, we got lots of bills out there. And we're talking, and part of this stuff is talking about not paying bills. You, you know, as a city, we should at least, we should at least pay our bills. We said we were gonna do this stuff, and now, and all of a sudden, it wasn't, it wasn't that long ago that we were saying that we could make, we can generate all, all this money, we're generating it all. Now we're finding, now we're, now we're saying, no, no, we're not generating, we need to get, we need to go up to citizens and get more from them to, to make this happen. And my thing is, is I'm not sure that's, you know, until, until we show that we are fiscally responsible, and I don't think this stuff is doing that, then it's hard to get the citizens on board. You should have the citizens on board, and I'm not sure they're on board on all this stuff.
Further comments, question, or discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, excuse me, would you please be quiet or leave? Thank you.
Would you, would you deviate from your agenda?
Would you please be quiet or leave?
You don't, but you, you strained the action.
If you can't stop talking, I'm gonna ask you to leave. Please leave.
No.
Please leave if you can't stop talking.
Respect.
So seeing no further discussion, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Extentions? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move now to the next item on our agenda, which is item B, approved resolution twelve thirty-six, establishing rates for fire and emergency medical service fees, and repealing resolution ten fifty-three.
I'm asking, I'm sorry, can you clarify that that's the suppression fee not establishing the rates for the fire department? Because it says the same thing on both, but the first one before the suppression.
Yeah, it's, it's just by the resolution, by the, by resolution ten fifty, which is rates for fire department fee.
You read the title, so I just really did the fire department.
Paul, I understood you did another staff report for us.
Actually, Mary ended, but I wanna comment before we move on. The, the water system study and the sewer system study are thirty-five thousand each.
Not three hundred thousand?
Three hundred thousand.
No. It's an extra zero in there.
So, Mayor, members of council, you have before you, at your request, a series of decisions here, and what's in your packet is a copy of resolution ten fifty-three that was adopted on twenty-seventh June, two thousand five, that established for the suppression fee. And then, resolution number twelve thirty-six, that would be June eleventh of two thousand twelve, so this would come back to you at that date if necessary. And then another resolution, or I'm sorry, ordinance four sixteen, that deals with moving the, the base fee from the water system to the electric customers, and then a copy of ordinance number three seventy-four that created the initial assessment. The page one gives you a copy of the three different options that were provided if you made the assessment go against the utility customers. So I think, Gail, this begins to answer some of your questions.
Can you hold that sheet up?
I can't, yes. It's page one.
Okay.
And so if you were to move the assessment, which would be an ordinance issue, you would create about thirty-five thousand dollars by charging that rate against a larger number of customers. If you increased it to five and ten, it would be fifty-four thousand, and seven to fourteen would be seventy-six thousand. And the last page in this document continues with the, the charge being assessed against the water meter. So it gives you a variety of different choices there, ranging all the way from additional eight thousand to thirty-one thousand to forty-two to fifty-four.
So, that's it? Okay. We'll move now to public comment.
Can you skip me this time?
Kate, you crossed out A, so I didn't skip you. You don't have four B on here, are you asking to add four B now?
So what do you think I have on there? Where am I allowed to speak?
Are you asking to speak to this item?
No, he's asking to speak.
Okay, you can go forward and speak, Kate.
I'm sure, it's a little bit of show and check. This answer is the Chinese letter, but not taking up much of the time. See, what I don't understand, I wanted to ask on the other page, it was to the general fund, I don't see where it was to the fire department. So, just like everyone else in the room, I'm totally confused about which items we're talking about when. Can't count all, I prefer my photographs not to be taken, thank you.
Sorry, you're in public, babe.
I was just making a request.
I don't have to.
My problem is, is when this all is discussed, all these plans come up, I don't get it. I've been following everything. I don't know when we decided to decide on three, five, or seven dollars per, I don't know when we decided on five, well, now I know when we decided on seven, eight percent, I, I, none of this came up. And it kind of bothers me, because we're supposed to be being open and transparent to the law, and I don't see either that openness, that fairness, or that transparency. I see a lot of misinformed people, I see a lot of alienated people right now, I see a lot of citizens who are unhappy, and that's why I'm unhappy. I haven't seen any of this before. And it just strikes me, that's what the last week called was about, a lack of open and transparent stuff. I think it's a real good idea to, to switch the fire suppression fee from the water lines to the electrical lines, because really, the water lines aren't making any fires where the electrical lines do. It also expands our base a little further outside of the city limits to places we actually have to go to, that doesn't pay anything right now. Speaking of other things not paying anything, what about the court? And I'm kind of agreeing with Gail here, it would be nice to see where this money is going. Like I said, the first batch is going to the general fund, what takes it? From the general fund to the fire department, if not the budget committee? How, how can all this come up before the budget committees even talk about it? How, how can we even decide? I mean, this is another year where they got hit with one big mass of misinformation right as they're starting. How we expect our citizens to make informed and reasonable budget planning without keeping them informed and reasonably happy? I don't get it. I just don't get it. I thought we were gonna move past all this, I thought we were gonna try and get along, not shove things down people's throats, to try and reach a compromise and get along. All I see right now is council members behaving as badly as audience members, making faces at people, making comments to people when they shouldn't. You guys are just as bad as the audience is right now. I, I'd like to see us actually become reasonable and civilized again.
Answer please.
Don't talk to me. Don't.
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Okay, can I, can I ask a question first? The statement was just made that this can be charged on utility accounts outside of the town, is that an accurate statement? It was my understanding that it can only be charged inside city limits. What is the answer?
We don't, I mean, if you're talking about the agenda item and the, the resolution, it would attach it to electrical accounts.
Inside and outside of the city.
That's right.
Okay. I can, I can understand that for outside the city, for those who don't already pay taxes into this system, but to ask citizens, again, double taxation, when already forty-two percent of their property taxes goes to this department, and now our utility companies are being taxed, and now our meters are being taxed, we've got beyond double taxation, we're onto quadruple taxation now for, to support a fire department that has issues, if that's what I'm saying.
Okay, Debbie, I called Jen up earlier, if it was my mistake, did you wanna come back and speak to this?
That's fine.
Okay.
I said my line.
Okay. Moving on then to Martha.
Martha, my task force, these are all, I, I don't know what we exactly need to raise, but being on the task force, we did have, come to the conclusion with the help of Devon Wells, that we do need a fire chief to operate, to be a paramedic, minimum part-time. He's also said that they could help with the, the billing, which may, somebody wants to look into that, cut our costs, and create the timeline that you're looking for. Is anyone familiar with it? I wanna bring up what I did a year ago, because I don't believe, right now, if we were being checked, that we are at a, I believe it's a five where we're supposed to be for insurance rates, without having that fire chief. And I know people say, well, my agent said I wouldn't be raised. Well, the agent is usually on commission, and the parent company, be it State Farm, Allstate, whatever, when they make a decision to pull their rates or change their rates, and I've seen it five or six times in the business I was in, because it, or related to the insurance from real estate, and people would pull out. So we, if, if it does come to that, and I'm not saying it's going to, but you have to consider it, in the back of your minds, if your rates go up, businesses and personal, on a personal level, maybe mine will go up two hundred dollars a year, how much less or more is that than raising some of these other rates? That's really what I'm looking at.
Virginia?
I've been through a few of these meetings and I'm disturbed, so I might not hear it quite right, but I have a few things to say. My name's Virginia Saffron, from K-Lux. First of all, I'd like to read the charter. After January first, two thousand eight, any such ordinance or resolution or order approved by a majority of the council that creates or increases any tax, charge, or fee, ordinance shall not be effective unless ratified by a majority vote of the city's qualified electors voting in an election where at least fifty percent of the registered voters cast a ballot, or the election is a general, or the election is a general election in an even numbered year. Then I'd also like to quote something from our attorney in the third paragraph of this letter. The ordinance could be adopted as an emergency ordinance. If the funds need to be collected before thirty days in order to fund fire EMS, then it could be effective July first, with the stated emergency, as a need to collect for fire EMS, getting them July first. Suggested language for this scenario is included in revisions to ordinance four sixteen. An alternative would be to pass a resolution with a few, with new fees on water bills, pass a proposed ordinance, then switch to the new ordinance once it comes to effect. You know, look, I was a nurse for fifteen years, I understand emergency medicine, and I think it's wonderful and it's important, but I also know that, I moved here in nineteen ninety-four, we didn't have a fire chief until two thousand six. I don't know how many people died, I don't know, you know, how many places burned down. We had a great volunteer fire crew, you know, and I think the volunteers do a great job, believe me, I have a nephew that's a paramedic, didn't volunteer, they're wonderful, they're great. I don't have any problem with any of that, but what I do have a problem with is the way things were mismanaged, and they were very, and I don't know Mr. Pritchard, I've never met him, I'm sure he's a fine guy, but, you know, when you get right down to it, let's see. The poor fellow who was in charge of the EMS was weighing over his head, should've never been given authority to make the mess as we all, they have.
Virginia, Virginia, let me stop you there for a second, we're not Virginia, Virginia, let me stop you there for a second, we're not going to have a public comment about specific individuals.
Okay.
If you'd like, if you'd like to address your comments.
The fire department.
If you'd like to address your comments to this agenda item, that's the appropriate thing to do.
Okay, well, this is, this is about raising money for that, so am I not in the right?
I just don't want you to start talking about individual people.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I apologize for that.
Or really think, just talk about this motion, or this, this is.
Well, I, it all matters about the fire department, you know, and we're trying to raise money so it can manage, be managed well. Well, and for whatever reason, there were some bad decisions made, mismanagement, and we're going to have to pay for it, and I don't know who's responsible, maybe I shouldn't have said his name, I just happen to be the one who's in charge, he's probably a fine gentleman, I don't know. But what I'm trying to get at is this town is so divided over this issue, it's never going to heal, and everyone wants to ramrod things through, why not just take the time, let things settle down, this town can't survive for a long time on a volunteer fire department, you know? And if the volunteers can't get behind that, then maybe we need new volunteers, because they should be here for that, you know, not, not because they have a certain leader.
Sandra?
I'm very alarmed that our lawyer would suggest passing this as an emergency without a vote of the people, it's very clear. Um, I don't know what went on in that executive session, I know that city business was discussed, um, internal payments were discussed, charter language was discussed, none according to standards and practices is, is proper for an executive session. Um, this, this initiative that the citizens passed has already withheld a legal challenge from the city of Damascus. And, uh, really, there was a, a lot of people that thought it was going to be overturned, and a lot of weight was put on that. And in fact, it was, it held up. And, uh, at the time that this passed, several, um, actions were reversed that had already happened. One of them was the streetlight fee, uh, another, I don't remember what the other one was, but a couple of them were, um, were rolled back because this initiative was made retroactive. Um, so, I'm not understanding that, and I don't think there's been an explanation of it. There really hasn't been an explanation or conversation about these things. Possibly, there has been vague conversation in a committee, the emergency services committee, but we have not heard the council speak about these things, or the possibility of these things occurring, particularly in specific detail. All of these things obviously happen inside an executive session, this is regular business. If there's a legal opinion, we should be allowed to hear that legal opinion. Um, nothing is privileged about charter changes or rate hikes. Um, so, the fact that this, these, all of these things came out of an executive session is very alarming. The last council was really raked over the coals because they had action items show up on the agenda without the proper foundation. And I agreed with the citizens who complained about that, that was not proper. Well, it's not proper now, it's not proper for this council to do it, any more than it was proper for the last council to do it. And the same people that were complaining then are doing it now, I find that to be hypocritical and unacceptable. Also, I don't really understand, most of you have to at least go up for election in November. I don't know, you know, do you think the people are asleep? I realize you were successful in recalling the last council, but the people were scared, they had no emergency services, they had the paper, shoving it down their throat twice a week. You got votes that you're not going to get as individual running council people, or mayor. So, number one, I would appreciate an explanation from our esteemed lawyer as to how can you can overlook our charter and, um, and start collecting this in July, I think that's really interesting, and yet unexplained. Now, I think the citizens have a right to have an explanation on that. Um, I think it's improper, like I say, I think, you know, we heard from the committee, the emergency services committee, well, five dollars is nothing, everybody can afford five dollars, well, I already addressed that, everybody can afford five dollars. Some people actually choose between high blood pressure medicine and a, and a nutritional meal. Other people maybe don't get to travel to see their relatives except once a year, and maybe not that, with, with the burden of the. You have recruited low-income people to this town, is this why? Because they're helpless when you sock it to them? Um, I think you ought to develop a conscience really quick before this next vote.
Hey, thank you, uh, Larry. We'll let you do that for a second.
Um, I was on the subcommittee to talk about fire. It was discussed and we understood that we were short of money, and if we can get a police, I mean, if we get a fire, we can get a fire person, great, we can be paramedic, fine, but we re-violated in that meeting, we didn't have money. And what's interesting to me is, in that meeting, it suggested that we have a subcommittee. I know this was brought to you as a council, since you got your information, that a subcommittee looked for financial ideas. It was also a, the, uh, person from the fourth had already volunteered to help count beans for us, and, and look at different ideas. I think it's time to do that, guys, I think it's time to stop it here and say, maybe we do need a re-violating, we look at. Maybe we need to bring something out to vote, and stop, and, and see if the people. Right now, you don't know, you don't know whose side is on where we are, which percentage has what, which percentage has this, there's no idea. Other than right now, you got a lot of people upset, so take it to vote. And take certain items to vote, don't, don't give us a big package, separate, separate pieces. What do you want to raise, for what reasons? Very clear reason why you want to do it. And make it separate, if, if it's ten items that we have to vote on, so be it. If we vote ten items, great, if we vote ten down, that tells you how the community stands. But bring it sep- separate to us, and bring it to a vote, just stop this.
Thanks, Larry. Vera?
Vera, send this channel, I've never been on, and I can sit in front of you, I've lived here years, many years. Um, and I've watched the Channel twenty-three, everything that's progressed up to today, that's why I'm here. Now, I listen all night long, and where I come from, we live on what we got, we live on it. And I would love to drive a Monsterrati. Unfortunately, I can't do that today. And I'm thinking that the city needs to think, uh, simple-minded, like, I'm, I'm in my seventies. My husband died, uh, in March of last year, with America for four years. I have widow's benefits that I live on. Uh, I have a lot more than most people, because he is a good waiter, but the senior citizens cannot continue paying for the high total rates that they're dealing with, the rates are too high, it just, and there has to be another way. I would love to have a fire department, I have heart trouble, I have all kinds of things going on, and if I have a heart attack, I worry, but still by that same token, can we afford one? Really, can we afford it? And the people, they're such good people and nice people, that are probably volunteers and stuff, that it just has gotten to where it seems like everybody's living out of their means, it's silly. Get your house in order and then go and get the fire department where you want it, instead of working this hard to make people pay for what you think is right, and it is right, but there's only so much you can afford to pay for. And it's just, I think, like, everybody's been saying all night long, you need to set back, take a breath, and figure the darn thing out. You know, that, you can always get stuff leave, but, you know, I just had to sell my mobile home and move into the senior center, and, um, I had a three hundred dollar deposit, like, you know, I, when I, when they got through with me, boy, I know them real good, I wound up with a forty-four dollar check signed by Brad the Rank. It, you, oh, just, I couldn't stand it. Anyway, and we had to get another three hundred dollar deposit when I moved in there, and when I already had one. Okay, that's not right, you know, okay, so, you got me really ticked off, I just got to say that. You know, I don't, when I get ticked off, I, I have to speak up, and I am ticked off, and I'll look at you, all of you. Because I think what you're doing is you're doing, you're trying to generate fees, you should be generating fees, but not at the expense of people that are that vulnerable. That it's not okay what you're doing, and then to make people make payments, even if they're like, we're on charity. I'm, I don't know, that's not right, and that's what I have to say, I'm disappointed in all of you, except for one person. Now, I'm going to get off the phone with that. But I am one ticked off lady.
Good. Vera?
Yes.
Okay, having had the public comment, uh, the next step is to move to, um, council motion, second. Mark?
The motion, uh, the city council by motion approve ordinance four sixteen, creating an updated fire suppression fee, and resolution twelve thirty-six assessing the fee to electric customers of the city.
Okay, this is our motion, is there a second? Second? Okay. Question?
Then made by Mark, second by Randy.
Um, I just want to clarify, I apologize for not doing this prior to your, your motion. To pass an ordinance, we have to have public notification, if it's not on our agenda to change an ordinance. So, Ruben? Uh, I know you wrote the letter and stuff, uh, suggesting the, uh, you know, the ordinance we passed, but if it wasn't on the agenda.
We need to place it on the agenda.
We need to put it on another.
Yes, this is not an emergency, we aren't doing it as an emergency.
Wait, wait, okay, so, uh, so Mark, hearing that, did you, should we proceed with your motion, or do you want to withdraw it?
Um, I'll withdraw it.
Okay, just, just to clarify, if it's not, if it just isn't getting on the agenda, so, to do an ordinance, um, without being noticed. Okay, Brad?
Um, I'll make a motion to amend the resolution number ten fifty-three, section two, adding, um, I should say, amend by resolution, resolution number ten fifty-three, section two, adding the rate schedule listed as option three of the fire EMS service fee chart for the time period July first, two thousand and twelve through June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen.
Then motion, is there a second? Second? Okay. Motion by Brad Lane, second by Randy Holstrom, move now to council comment, question or discussion. Before we do that, I'd just like to reiterate the policy that we have a public comment prior to council action, and then as we move into our deliberation on this motion, um, we ask that our, our guests respect that. Uh, if you'd like to have conversations about it, uh, please move those conversations to the hall, otherwise we'll proceed to council, discussion, comment.
I would think the whole motion was.
I'll restate it.
Okay.
Yeah, and Brad, again, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but it was, um, amend by, uh, by resolution, uh, resolution ten fifty-three in section three, and add the rate schedule listed.
Section two.
Section two. And add the rate, the rate schedule listed as option three, um, on our, uh, fire EMS service fee chart for the time period, well, the same time period as the.
Yeah, exactly.
As the last.
Through June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen.
So it's a two-year time period, and it's a, a water fee increase. Okay. Questions, comment, or discussion?
Well, I think it.
Dale?
I think it'd be important to explain what section two contains.
Okay, section two of the rate schedule on the fire EMS service fee chart. Brad, I'll read section two, uh, of the ordinance ten fifty-three. Section two is calculations of fire department fees, beginning with the billing period July twenty, two thousand and five. Each customer should pay the following fire department fee, lists a series of, um, fees based on meter size. Gail, are you suggesting that I read all of those?
No, well, no, the, well, the meter size.
And, and, um.
We're, we're moving to electrical, right?
Adding, adding the rate schedule.
The motion wasn't to move, it was just to amend the existing ten fifty-three.
Mainly because I thought that was a lot less, uh, you know, having to go through ordinance and all of that, and changing from water to electrical. Um, also, as much as I would like to be able to, I think it would be nice to be able to charge people outside of the city, that creates a whole other, um, problem, switching our, um, suppression fee from, from water to electrical, and charging people outside of our city coverage area. That's my own take on it, so.
So that's going to change your scheduling, right from.
If you look at the, if you look at the next page.
Next page has a rate schedule. Yeah.
It's in our packet, yeah.
But can you state it for the audience who doesn't have the packet in front of them?
You're asking me to read the section two, all of it?
Not all of it, what you're changing, generally changing it to, please, or from to.
Uh, meter, meter size, uh, five, uh, five eighths inches. Um, has changed from a one-dollar fee to a nine-dollar fee. Meter size, uh, three-fourths of an inch has changed from a one-dollar fee to a nine-dollar fee. Meter size one inch has changed from a three-dollar fee to eleven-dollar fee. Meter size one and a half inch has changed from.
We're not doing this.
Six to fourteen. Two inches will be changed from, uh, eight to sixteen. Two-inch turbine will be changed from ten to eighteen. Three-inch turbine will be changed from, uh. Yeah, we all have three-inch turbine. Okay, so, so it's been eliminated in the, in the new schedule. Um, three-inch compound will be changed from twenty to twenty-eight, and four-inch compound will be changed from twenty-five to thirty-four.
What was that last page, please?
Mark?
Could you restate, I'm sorry, the first three, I got confused, because I, because I, can I explain why I'm confused? Because I thought we were just going to a straight set, seventeen, seven dollars and fourteen, and now it's not, it's something completely different than what was ever here, so, the one.
It's from the packet, but.
Well, I, I have the packet and it's not, it's not there, so it's one to nine, one to nine, two to eleven, I think, so that's, that's all I'm going to.
Okay, um, so we don't have any questions or comments, I'd like to make just a couple to address some, some issues that came out of public comment. Uh, somebody asked a question about, uh, if it goes to the general fund, how does it get to the fire department? And, uh, but someone else hinted at the idea that the budget committee, uh, would, would look over that. But the fire department is funded by the general fund, uh, and so, um. And so, so if I put it in the general fund, it becomes available to the fire department, and then can be budgeted through the budget process. A couple of issues that were raised about whether or not these concepts were, have been talked about and been discussed. I know that they were discussed in the Public Safety Task Force meetings, and the...
No.
Yeah, they were, and the reports that came from the Public Safety Task Force to the council included these proposals. And so we asked to have them, since we had accepted the Public Safety Task Force recommendations, we asked to have them put into resolution four. Another suggestion that was, or a question was brought up was about the question at the end of the Public Safety Task Force Committee recommendation, that the committee be allowed to create or that the council appoint a subcommittee on finance. And the decision was made at that time that any members, and it was decided by the council by consensus, that any members of the Public Safety Task Force that wanted to continue meeting to address finance could do so. And that was, I believe that was a final report, Paul helped me out here, it was at the end of April.
That's correct.
So it's been over a month since then, we haven't received any further reports, and we're inching closer to the end of the fiscal year and the time to approve a new budget, so.
You can't, you can't make a list of numbers that we didn't say.
You're going, you're going, you have a chance to speak.
We were on a...
You have a chance to speak.
I'm going to ask you to stop talking.
You have a chance to make your comment. If you can't stop talking, you're going to be asked to leave.
I'm not gonna stop talking because I'm...
Then you're going to be asked to leave. It's not a leave.
If you can't stop talking, it's not a leave.
It's not as bad as it is, Lance. It's that bad.
It's time for you to go.
You're that bad, Lance.
It's time for you to go.
You're that bad.
Sorry to say pink, we say, that's pretty bad. Really bad. So, just to finish the comment, so it did come to council in the same report as it is currently in our packet. Several options and proposals. It was also mentioned by, it was also mentioned by several of us on council that it was, when we get to finance, that it's time for the council to step up and make some decisions about funding the recommendations that the community brought to the council.
Are you going to address the initiative and the voters?
We're going to continue with this agenda. Right now, we are at, we're at council action, not public comment. So again, I'm going to ask you to be quiet, let council take their action. You'll have a chance to speak. If you can't stop, you're going to be asked to leave myself.
I was already there, and I asked that you...
If you're gonna keep talking, you're gonna be asked to leave again. If you keep talking, you'll be asked to leave.
I'm just gonna haul me out of here.
Okay? Any other council comment, question, or discussion? Gail?
Yeah, can we just clarify again what the net effect in dollars is of the current motion?
Yes. Net effect in dollars is fifty-four thousand two hundred sixty-four.
Thank you.
Randy?
The current rates generate about eighty-eight hundred dollars.
Eighty-eight fifty-six.
Right, is that in, is the fifty-four in addition to that, or is it the net between the two?
It would be the net of the increase, yes.
So it's forty-five thousand, or is it fifty-four?
Well, again, if you take a calculator, subtract the eighty-eight fifty-six from fifty-four to sixty-four, you'd have to...
Yeah, it's about forty-five.
You'd have the increase.
It's left forty-five, forty-five four oh eight, which is my foot, but I didn't have a calculator.
Okay, further comment, question, or discussion? Seeing then, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Extentions?
Stay.
Obstain, motion carries. Okay, Gail?
And that's effective when?
Gail?
Oh, no.
Did you, did you want to say why you voted no?
July 1. I changed to yes.
You changed to yes. Now, did you want to say? Okay. Jeff, did you want to say why you're abstaining? Okay. We'll take a seven-minute break, let the tapes get changed, and we'll come back ready to go with action item C.
You called this in before I had a chance to say.
Go ahead, Brad.
And I don't, I just...
We out, stop.
We're ready to, action item four C. Before we do that, I've asked Ruben to give a brief statement in response to the suggestion that there's a charter amendment being ignored here. Ruben?
Thank you, yes, there is a charter amendment. The, the problem with the charter amendment in and of itself is that it attempts to regulate administrative behavior. And it's not legislative in nature. The, this council has taken these actions on fees in administrative capacity, meaning it's not, it's not part of enacting a law, but carrying out fees that are already on the books.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll move on to four C, which is resolution 1237, establishing rates for fire ambulance emergency and non-emergency medical services, and repealing resolution 1095. Paul, there's a staff report in our packet prepared by Mary Ann. Will you be presenting it?
Yes. Mary, council, you have it for you, item number four C, which is a resolution establishing rates for emergency and non-emergency medical services, and giving you a copy of those proposed rates. Behind that is a copy of resolution 1095, which is the current ordinance, and behind that are the current rates that are charged for ambulance and emergency services. There's also a chart that provides you with information about the rates that are charged by the city of Good River, and the rates that are charged by Skamania Hospital District. Make note that when you look at the rates charged by Skamania Hospital District, those are supported by a property tax. So there is a district-wide property tax that tends to buy down the cost of the ambulance charges. And then there's the 2012, 2013 rates as charged by the fire department for emergency response and ambulance transportation.
Anything, Paul? We have a couple people who've asked to speak on this. First, Kate Smith.
So why bother?
Sorry, if you're indicating you don't wish to speak on this.
I'm just kidding, it doesn't do any good.
Okay, Larry here. He decided to leave. So, I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this, so we'll move to council motion and second.
I'll move away from resolution 1237, establishing rates for fire, ambulance, and emergency and non-emergency medical services, and repealing resolution 1095.
Here's the motion, is there a second? Okay, motion's been made by Randy Holstrom, seconded by Mark Storm. Council question, comment, or discussion? Gail?
Just to clarify, this is to change the fee rates and schedule related to ambulance and fire calls?
Yes. Yes.
And I realize everything is a little smoky on revenue from calls, but is there some projection on the amount that this may bring to the table?
Yes, it's forty-nine thousand four ninety-two, it's in the financial analysis section of the report. And that's additional revenue for what you're saying.
New net new.
Yeah.
Well, somebody else can go on, and I'll come back.
Hey, Tom?
Well, for me, I've kind of looked in this, I approached this some time ago, so I can't really go... The only issue I'd go against it on is the fact that it is more fees for us. But I am in support, and have historically been in support of raising, when they were talking about low money, and when I was talking about issues with it, that it's charged more out there. So, really, from that end of it, I can't, I can't go against it. Because I do believe that the fees may have been low on ambulance and, and my head and eye out. But I guess that still may be challenged on the fee, but I am, from the citizen's side, I believe it probably should have been, again, it wouldn't have been hard to approach the citizens on this and say, hey, there's some things we got to do in here, let's take a, let's take a vote on it. And that's, that's what they asked for, and probably what they should have gotten, but I think I missed on it. I believe that that's where they would, that's where they come on, that they believe that some of those fees should have been.
Okay, well, my comment on this is that we've heard from the community through the Public Safety Task Force process, and we know that the community would like to have a fire chief paramedic. And that's one way to equip the, the fire department so that they can protect the citizens of this community. Another way to look at this is, long term, we need to equip this department to self-sustain, okay? And this motion would do that, this resolution would do that. It would, it would bring our rates consistent with what we see in, with our neighbors, and it would allow them to have the capacity over the next couple of years as we are finding a source to fund the department that's not based on projection. It would allow them to determine whether a one-person department or a two-person department can, can be self-sustaining and generate the revenue it needs. So I look at this as another positive step towards equipping our fire and emergency services department to, to get back onto a sustainable path financially. So I can support it. Gail?
And just rough numbers, you know, if, and I don't disagree with this, but if and when we pass this particular resolution, based upon the other two, that's a total of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, new net new revenue. And one concern I have is that the revenue may go into the department, but what we're really trying to fund is staffing, today, anyway. And I think I tried this before, and it was not legal, but maybe the rules changed. But is there a way to target these funds, to limit it for staff only, so that it doesn't get into the budget, and some cowboy gets cavalier about, you know, making other purchases on these funds once it's in the, in the fund balance?
Ruben, would it be possible to make an amendment to the motion to pass resolution 1237 to establish that, that the revenue generated by this resolution would be, to be used for personnel only?
Sure, I mean, anything, as long as it's up to the council on how to, on how to do that.
Are you suggesting an amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So, Randy, did you...
I'm okay with that, that's our intent.
Mark?
Yeah, I'm okay, yeah.
Okay, so that'll be an amendment. Kathy, did you get that? Tom?
I just want to, because you asked how much money this thing's going to generate, again, this is, this is a projection. So just, we aren't, we were talking about not going with projections, so, so whatever Paul's giving to you there as a number is a weight projection.
I understand.
It could be labeled, labeled over that, way, some people are going to say above it, I'd say it's going to be below it. But just the fact that it, that the ambulance probably should fall into like, there's going to be some, there's going to be some money generated.
Either way, it'd be protected.
And you want it protected, right.
Now, is that only the increase, or the entire ambulance fee? Because I would say that if all of the ambulance revenue all of a sudden is only be able to use for staffing, that could create a potential problem, as in not having flexibility of what to use generated funds for.
This motion is only for the increase.
Okay. All right, this question.
Only because I didn't think of it before.
The increase includes what used to be there. I mean, there's not a...
Yeah, I think you're right, yeah. I mean, it's changing kind of the structure, so. Paul, did you have any input on that issue?
This would, this would increase the revenue forty-nine, four ninety-two per year, based on our very conservative, correct me if I'm wrong, Mary Ann, projection about what you would see in the way of revenue for next year's budget, which I think was fifty thousand. We pared that back as low as we possibly could, working with Devon. So that would get you up to just about a hundred thousand, if you link this with the projection for next year.
What Gail's trying to say though is, go ahead.
Well, and that's fine, because I think if the whole thing is restricted on this particular motion, I mean, we'll be making motions approving a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. So even if this hundred thousand is protected, because I didn't think of it in the other motions, there's thirty-eight thousand that's left unprotected. So it's not like we're crippling the department. And again, it could come back to council for changes.
So I think Tom's right, that the amendment would have to apply to...
Everything.
All of the fees. Randy, are you still okay with that?
Sure.
Mark?
Yeah.
Okay. Clarify that, and you mentioned the concept of not having thought about it for the previous two resolutions. So that can also be done through the budget process, if there's new revenue.
I understand, but we're still, we're going to end up with a hundred thousand of protected fund out of a hundred and thirty-eight. So, so far.
And as we now estimate, and we did through the Public Safety Task Force process, if you're somewhere in that ninety to a hundred thousand dollar range, that's what you're going to need to have for that fire chief paramedic.
Okay.
Good. Further comment, question, or discussion? Seeing then, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions?
Stay.
Motion carries. Okay, turn now to item four D. Proving resolution 1238, authorizing the interfund loan from the electric portion of the capital reserve fund to the emergency services capital reserve fund of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a briefing at time of tenure, paying fourteen thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars, eighty-nine dollars, twenty-nine cents in accumulated unpaid interest from November 2008 in repealing resolution 1053, or 1153. Paul, you put together, or Mary, you have to get your staff report.
Mary Ann, the mayor, members of council, we have before you a staff report dealing with this issue, backed up by a proposed resolution number 1238 for your action, and then a 1212, which was a June 13th, 2011 action that established the current payment schedule, and then a November 10th... And then a November tenth, which authorized the interfund loan from the electric department. And then there are three different exhibits. The first one is the current payment schedule. Exhibit A is making no payment for two years. And that would mean that you'd have seven years to make up the difference. Exhibit B is a payment of ten thousand per year for two years. And exhibit C is twenty-three thousand per year for two years. The only thing that you keep in mind is that you are required under state law to return that money or make those loan payments complete within that original ten-year window. So, that original due date, ten years from last year when you approved that schedule, has to be met.
Thank you, Paul.
We'll go down to public comments. Hello, council. Thank you for this time. I'd like to ask a question just because I didn't really hear. What was the status of the loan that the past council had set up? Have those payments been made?
Yes, they have.
Okay. So, they're made in the current today?
Yes.
Okay. My thought on this is, is, you know, we've got three different options on how to make payments, okay? And the whole point of the matter was is, if you set up a good management structure, you find out what your finances are and you continue to make those payments because it makes it simple and consistent, okay? If you elect to do other payments, how, how do you know that you're gonna be able to make those payments in the future? You're talking about having larger payments than what you currently have, okay? Have only paying interest payments. Again, to me, if you ask me, this is just extremely poor management of the city's money. You know you have a debt. You know you need to pay it. You should be paying it on the original loan, what it is. Do it, get it done, and forget about it, okay? Now, it's just hard for me to believe that you're even considering changing something that's already been set up that hasn't been taken care of in the past. So, right now, past councils, present council has got this idea in their head that we don't have to pay anything. We can change it. We can move it back aside so we don't have to do it. Doesn't take the interest away, doesn't take the fact away you stole that money and that you have to pay that money back, correct? So, the next thing that I want to say is, when you start making additional charges to this fund, it has to come out of the general fund to pay for this. All the money goes into the general fund for everything. Everything gets paid out of the general fund for everything, okay? You have a few items there. You have city water, city light, sewer, streets that generate income, okay? How are you generating income to pay this loan back? Okay? You guys are not being very smart as far as managers of the city's money. If I was an employee of the city right now, I would be extremely worried for my job. Because what I see gonna happen to this city in the near future is you're gonna tap all the money that the city has and you're gonna run this city into bankruptcy. And then Dave Meriwether will be running this city from, from Wood River. And that's what's gonna happen because you guys are not paying attention. You guys probably don't even know how much money the city's in debt right now, do you? Not a single one of you can tell me how much money the city's in debt, okay? And you should all know. It's your responsibility. Supposedly, if you were all elected to your position, you're supposed to know this, okay? You're supposed to know what the finances are of your city and so that you can represent the people of this community, okay? So, you can do whatever you want. It doesn't matter what any of us say here. I know I'm not supposed to talk to anybody else. But whatever we say isn't gonna make a hell of beans with you because whatever you do, it'll be your legacy. When the city goes bankrupt and the city goes down because of piss-poor management, you'll be the ones to blame, no one else. Thank you.
Yay, I got to sign up for something. What nearly got me thrown out of this council meeting tonight was, I just wanted to ask clarification because when the mayor opened this meeting, he was giving an example to the public as to why these action items were listed here on this agenda tonight. And then he failed to do so as he went down. He would list why it was an action item, why council would put that on there. And that's the only clarification I wanted. I just wanna know why this action, specific action item was listed here. And I noticed several other people in the public, they, without even raising their hand, got dialogue and got clarification of items on the agenda. I politely raised my hand and I get threatened to be thrown out. That's all I wanted to know, why a single thing was on the action item. That's it. This is a special meeting. We didn't get these nice little packets at all you have. We didn't hear any discussion because this stuff was discussed in executive session. I'm on the budget committee and I didn't hear a lot of this stuff. But I would like to say one thing. You guys just hit the enterprise funds with a seven percent increase or a two percent increase on the franchise fees. And you discussed at the last budget meeting that you're thinking about doing away with the TV and the broadband. Well, now, there is a stream of revenue that's paying administration costs. So, now you're gonna delete this revenue stream that you have, you have administrative costs coming out of. And where's that gonna go? Oh, you're gonna hit the enterprise funds with those too. Well, it's a good thing we're having a rate study because our rates are gonna have to go up, aren't they? Because we're just gonna hit 'em left and right. Let's have another special meeting. Let's put some more fees on. The last budget committee, along with previous council, made appropriate reductions to the general fund and administration in order to fund numerous loans, verbal loans, loans that had gone years without being paid, no payments, no interest, for years. We didn't have to increase any fees or expenses to the taxpayers, nothing. Now, this council, you don't wanna pay those loans. You wanna increase fees to the community and to the taxpayers. I'm ashamed of this council for its clear disrespect and disregard of the registered voters of our town, the very people that you claim to represent. Give me a break. It's clear that you understand the initiatives passed by the voters explicitly state that no fees or tax increases can be made without a majority of the vote of the people. By approving these resolutions tonight, it should be clear to the entire community that our city government is a dictatorship, not a democracy. This council has no regard to the voting community and does not have your best interest at heart. I would like to invite the community to join me this November, if not before, to vote these special interest dictators out of office. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany?
Couple names. I wanna make just one sentence statements on the last name that you voted on and just say that it really doesn't matter how high you set the fees. If you don't go for services, it won't make any difference on your income. And you also voted on that to go for the personnel only. So, you have already a designated amount, a hundred thousand dollars, which is needed for a fire chief. So, I question the reason why we need to defer the loan payments, again, and this'll be five years now that these loan payments have been deferred. And we're gonna defer them for another, another two years. Making the total income for this department now, the numbers have been floating around. So, as fast as I could, including the loan, the franchise fee, because I'm sure you're probably gonna pick the most expensive part because you've done that thus far tonight. Your track record is pretty clear. The franchise fee, the suppression fee, the taxes they get, and the response fees, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's a lot. That's a lot that you're asking for the citizens to pay, double taxing. And it, it's just ludicrous in the sort of economy that we're in to put off paying a loan, again, to hope that the funds will be there in the future for this. Because people are doing less, people are paying less, insurance is paying less, people aren't going as many places, you're not gonna have as many people coming through. And it's, again, you have projecting and you have what's real. And this loan is real. It needs to be paid back. And that's what the previous council did. They set up a loan payment, which now you have all this extra money, which there is no justification for now not paying for this loan that you're, you've made all these increases that you have the capability of being able to pay.
Okay, it looks like you pressed up four D. Did you still wanna talk to it?
I want you to press it up. I used the lens for just that reason.
Yeah, I've got a black pen. Okay, so, you're gonna, you're gonna talk then?
Sure. I pay my bills, I pay my bills before they do, before they get interest payments, before they get too big that I all of a sudden can't pay them. This is a town. It should have the same moral and ethical reason to pay its bills as I do personally. And, you know, putting it off, it's just putting it off. Have you noticed the property taxes went down this year? Mine did. That's less property tax too. And it's proof, forgot to mention that part. There's gonna be less everything. And everything's gonna cost more. And the rest of the country seems to know that. And yet, you guys seem to not know it. And I don't quite understand why. But on a personal note, I don't care if we go bankrupt because I don't see anything good about any of this city council going on. I'd almost rather the county running it because at least they've got ethics.
Okay, we've had our public comments. Now, we'll move to... I didn't sign up for item H. This is item D.
Um, I remit's the last action item.
Yeah, will there be eight action items?
No, yeah.
Did you wanna talk now, or some, sure, okay, nice.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Mark. I'm a citizen. First of all, as a member of the Public Safety Task Force, I was to put together the financial group, and we do have that. Last I heard, Mary Ann was not gonna be available for the budget by that time. And with the crunch that you guys have been in, we just didn't meet. We didn't get it put together, but something had to be done. So, I take responsibility for us not having given you anything else. But I want to commend the council for plunging ahead anyway and trying to fund what the public wanted done, which was a fire chief and a paramedic. As far as emergencies go, not having a paramedic is an emergency. The last council did whatever they could to strip money out of the general fund in order to not have any money left for the fire department, or so it seemed. And that's how a lot of us interpreted it, and that's what caused the problem. Here, you added money back in, and in particular, this item, the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan. Only a fool would pay that full price right now. Talk about money management. If you guys aren't paying attention to this, then you need to. We sell that property now to two hundred thousand dollar loan. Matter of fact, if the fire hall hadn't been delayed and the price of steel hadn't gone up, there would be no loan, nothing at all. But at some point, that property will sell. Why are you paying the full price? Why aren't you just calculating it on two hundred thousand? Now, maybe you can stretch that out. At the moment, the crisis is right now. What we're trying to do is to get the fire department, emergency services, with enough money in the bank so that we know what their budget will be for the following years. And that's what this does. It sunsets, it looks to me like, after two more years. And then you gotta pay it. But at least then, at that point, the fire, the emergency services are set and it makes that budget easy. I would rather quit that off to make sure we know what's happening with fire and emergency services. I suggested this at the last council. It was kind of rejected. You can have this variable. As far as that goes, the Department of Revenue said you could borrow this money again from the same fund and basically add in an item never paid this off. Well, I don't think that's a good idea. At some point, you need to pay the bills. But there are cities that are doing that apparently. But we don't have to pay off the full four fifty. You could look at it as saying, hey, it's gonna be two hundred thousand. And plus, there are several developments in the work which may help spread this property tax base which will make it a lot easier in a couple of years to pay. Maybe they'll come through, maybe they won't. But you may only have to pay on two hundred thousand instead of four fifty. Which is why I really hope that you will reduce this rate and use that money for the fire EMS. Because that is where the true emergency is. And if one kid dies, one person out on the highway doesn't get a paramedic in time, that's on your heads. It's on the heads of all the people who don't wanna have a paramedic or look to try and prevent funding for the fire EMS. So, you wanna go to bed to sleep while at night, you're doing a good job. I appreciate what you're doing. Some of this may get overturned in court. I'm not an expert on that, but lawyer, there's all these other opinions, and I've looked back and forth. But I will commend you for trying to get that funded based on our recommendations from a wide group of the community and with input from the community. And so, I wanna thank you very much because while we may have heard some people who aren't very happy with you, there is a great big group who is very happy with you and will be most supportive of all that you've been doing here tonight. So, thanks.
Okay, that's it for public comment then. We'll move now to council motion and second. And seeing none, we'll move to the next agenda item, which is the potential action to refer referendum to voters with choice of charter language. We've now had a staff report on this. But it has been discussed earlier, and Ruben's presented that our charter currently tries to legislate administrative action. Any council comments, question, or discussion?
So, are we in a motion or what?
We could, we could have a motion. Oh, excuse me. We have a couple people signed up to speak to this. Gabe and then Larry's back. What's that? Gabe?
I have no idea what I'm talking on. Nobody else has any idea what we're talking on either because there is nothing. There is nothing on the packet. All it says is choice of charter language. We haven't heard anything about the language. So, what am I talking on? Seriously. I mean, come on here. How do, how do you research something like this? How do you decide? Come on. Can we at least have real action things to kind of respond to? Instead of choice of charter language? Okay, fine. Come up with a staff report. Come up with somebody who can tell us what's going on before you ask for a public comment.
Thank you for that comment. Is there counsel interest in having staff come back with potential language for... for a referendum to correct the discrepancy in the charter? Randy? Jeff?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
No?
Okay, so there's a consensus?
What is the discrepancy?
Okay, Ruben, you said it earlier in the meeting. For those that didn't understand or weren't here, would you repeat it?
Uh, yes. Section thirty-two subsection four of the charter attempts to address some actions that are administrative and not legislative. And so the hope would be to work to create a referendum on that in order to have that charter amendment only address legislative actions, take administrative out of the realm because it's not a appropriate realm for a charter to address anyway, or something to be addressed by initiative as it was done.
We finished the public comment, would you, would you just?
I can wait to the end.
Wait to the end, yeah. Okay, so we have a consensus for you to do that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So no motion, no second. Okay, we've already passed item four F, so we'll move now to item four G, potential action regarding expenditure cuts related to service or program adjustments. Colin, you gave us a staff report on our desks.
Right.
We gotta share this with us.
Sure. Mayor and members of council, at the council request, in these discussions with the mayor, I took the time to visit some other communities who are going through very similar fiscal issues that you are. So I tried to wrap into this a number of policy initiatives that you could undertake that would help to get some of the costs of the city under greater control. One is to reduce the hours at city hall. So there are some communities, in order to cut the budgets, have closed city hall from eight to nine in the morning and from four to five. Staff still in the building doing work, they just aren't available for the citizens. So that disruption to the workflow has some savings. Second would be to close city hall. Some communities have closed city hall for half a day, some a full day. That would be one area that you can gravitate toward for some reductions. Third is to negotiate additional cost sharing with employees for health insurance. You've had this discussion already, this is something that most cities see that they're gonna begin doing every year because those costs apparently aren't gonna get controlled, and so it's gonna drive you to have this discussion every year. Number four is to convert the electric department to a cooperative. We've thrown, we've thrown that idea out for some discussion, and it's something this council, you didn't wanna take a look at. But again, if you're looking at ways to save costs, that may be one thing for you to take a look at. Canby, Oregon, has a city council-appointed board that oversees both water and electricity, and that cooperative buys administrative services from the city. Five would be discontinue special contract with the sheriff's office for policing and live with whatever your community pays in the way of property taxes for police services, or reduce a portion of it. And again, this is going, these discussions are going on in other counties throughout the state. Six is to eliminate the position of full-time city administrator. I know that you've been through this, it wasn't a very happy experience, but maybe you can only afford a part-time or retired person on some kind of a retainment. Contract out for services, this is something we saw cities do in the seventies when we saw Proposition thirteen in California, whole departments were spun out of a city and then recontracted at seventy percent of what the city used to spend for that service. That is something that a couple cities are looking at here. Westland and Milwaukee have combined their finance departments. They're about ten miles away, but given computers and cellphones and modern telephones, they're able to do that for a savings around a hundred thousand dollars. Reduce city staff to a minimal service level, eliminate all positions except for those that be deemed most important. And again, that is something that you and your community would have to decide on. You could, as some communities have, is combine the positions of city administrator, clerk, recorder into one position, and that reduces the service level that you're able to provide, but it does achieve the goal of reducing costs. And number nine is to disincorporate the city. Gates does this about every ten years for a variety of reasons, finances being one of the reasons. So if you get to the point where you don't have the basic revenue to support the function of the city, maybe it's time to have the discussion about whether or not you even want to be incorporated city. So those are just there for your discussion and as ideas. If I can answer any questions, I could gladly do so.
Okay, so what I would suggest is that we approach this as there are nine expenditure reduction options listed, that we approach this and, and, uh, about each one in turn rather than jump all over the place. So is there any objection to approaching it that way? Okay, so we'll just start with, uh, we'll come back to Kate here for another public comment.
Oh, I'll just say the same thing as said before. When we can't look at something that you guys get given, I don't know how you can expect us to comment on it or notice even nothing, or say.
This is a report that came to the council today.
Oh, yeah, I've got it, read it, haven't I?
And Tiffany?
Um, yeah, my comment's the same. I don't know why this is all happening. And the public doesn't know.
Well, these are potential cost reductions that we can, we could talk about. So is there anyone in council then that would like to talk about, number one, reducing the hours at city hall? Jeff?
Well, what's the actual impact if you were to reduce hours at city hall, but the employees would still be paying the wage? So how do you see a cost savings with that?
Well, and the communities have used this approach. What they see is a greater efficiency, more of the important work gets done without people being interrupted by the general public coming in. I'm not sure that they could actually identify a real dollar savings. It's more of a soft dollar savings, it's not a direct benefit. But again, calling around and talking to different cities about your size and saying, what are you doing? This is one of the strategies that's being used.
Any other questions or comments about this? Kate, is council interested in pursuing this as an option?
No.
No. Mark?
No.
Oh, okay. Next one was close city hall, the idea of closing that one day per week, open only four days a week, or potentially only open three days a week. There's also a suggestion of a half day, any comments or questions about that? Jeff?
Smaller communities, how has this been received? How's the overall customer service? And how does that actually create savings? It's, would be a furlough day, and you stagger, would this, what would it look like? And how would that, actually, how, how does it lay out in front of us?
You can furlough people off for that day or that half day that you're not open. It could be actually reducing on a percentage basis because you move people from forty hours a week to maybe thirty-two. In the communities that I talked to who use this approach, initially, people get concerned about how am I gonna get a permit? How am I gonna get this done and get that done? And people eventually get accustomed to the fact that city hall or the county courthouse is not open that half day or that full day a week.
What's, what's the cost advantage? I mean, what does it save us to close a day?
I can't tell you the exact number, we have to, if you were interested in that, we could, we could figure that out.
I mean, not tonight, but just a piece of the pie.
Right.
Mark?
Wouldn't you lose a lot of mutual, you know, business from other cities that aren't on those hours? I mean, you know, that contacting businesses or them contacting us, if you were closed, might be hard to do business.
It would, Mark, it would, but that also happens with your citizens. So they know that on Fridays, don't call city hall or even go there because it isn't open.
No?
Oh.
Okay?
Takes me a while. I was just thinking.
Any interest on council in pursuing this op, this option? Get ready?
Um, no, I'd go for a hybrid, like maybe fifth Fridays or something, where you're closed four days a year or something to start it, not just, say we're closed for half a days or something. Kind of furlough, negotiate that with a furlough kind of thing.
Fred?
Well, I know that we're closed, our galleries close one day a week, and invariably, that will be the one day a week that everybody came by. And everybody was upset that we weren't open. So that would just be my, get it?
I'm not sure, if we chose to do that, I'm not sure that could be applied to the union employees.
And that's a good point, there's probably Public Works and utilities would not be affected by this because they deal with some, with issues that you wouldn't deal with in regular city hall staff.
No.
No? Okay, we don't have a consensus to pursue that idea. Okay, the next one was additional cost sharing with employees for health insurance. I feel like we've done that tonight. If there's anyone that'd like to question or comment further, now would be the time. Fred?
We did also, at least for the time being, we're somewhat locked into our current rate structure and insurance plan without possibly causing more problems than we're solving. So, you know, at least for the time being, until we can work out something with our union contract or to where we could change insurance plans, I don't see that as a viable option.
This one's come to the council before, converting the electric department to a cooperative. I'm not clear as to where you've identified the cost savings there.
What actually would happen is that you, when you create a cooperative, you probably would have a reduction in the hourly rate that those people would make. They tend to make less money than city or county workers. And you see a different approach to the rate structure. Most co-ops pay an annual dividend so that there's more interest on the part of the members in the co-op to make sure that the electric rates are at a level where they need to be so that the dividend check looks pretty good.
So, I guess we'd be, we'd be eliminating all of our current employees that are under collective bargaining agreement?
Yeah, or you would negotiate and they would go into the new co-op.
Okay, and that would be asking them to open up their existing collective bargaining agreement?
Sure, or by the time you got it organized, the agreement would be up and then they could move over.
Okay, and so that, that would be an agreement with a new cooperative that was created?
Exactly, yes.
So it'd just be wage reductions for the electrical workers?
Right.
Other questions about that? Mark?
The rate study coming up, would we get a lot of information from that to, for the cooperative? Would that, would that have any connection on the rate study with this determining on the, if this would be, it work out for us?
It wouldn't directly affect this, Mark. If you look at the rate information that Trace had pulled together for you, you can begin to see the comparison in the cost between different co-ops, cities, and other service providers. Generally, the co-ops are on the lower end, but then again, there's a lot of things that affect that. If you go to Skamania County and you look at their rate structure, you can't compare that to yours because they have a tax base that pays a portion of that. So there's a tax that covers that. But, yeah, I don't see anything coming out that would affect this decision.
Jeff?
Yeah, I, I'm sure this is somewhat of a complicated venture, but I think the other piece of the pie that may relate to at least looking at this from a feasibility standpoint is we've got most of the electrical that's planning on retiring in the next couple of years.
That's right.
And so we're gonna be faced with doing something. And I think those two ought to be studied perhaps in tandem. Maybe this is, would be the window of opportunity if we were gonna do it. That's my comment.
Okay. Well, just to clarify, this isn't a cost savings in the next fiscal year?
Oh, no, no.
Okay, so where some of these others might be, this is a, this is a long-term cost savings?
If you go to Gail's comment, if you begin to look out the next five, seven, eight years and anticipate that in two or three years out, you're gonna see all the, one of those employees leave, now would be the time to begin looking at all of your options. Now, we've discussed with both Public Works and Electric, and another approach that some communities have used. The work of the two is somewhat similar. So maybe we combine the two, and it's one department with one supervisor instead of two departments. But, but Gail's right, these are things you need to think far enough ahead and begin looking at. Because moving to a co-op would require a great deal of consulting work to help you get to that point to see if this is really something you wanna do.
Yeah, I guess I agree with Gail that looking, looking out into the future, it's worth us starting to make some plans about the future of the electric department. But I think the focus of this meeting is, you know, potential expenditure cuts for the coming fiscal year. And I just don't see that with this option.
Okay, we have, we are proposing the work plan for the electric department in next fiscal year to do a transition plan, which will begin moving you in that direction.
And that might lead in this direction, and it might lead in a different direction. Other questions or comments about that? Okay, next item?
Appointed procedure, Mr. Mayor. At ten o'clock, we were supposed to approve moving beyond ten o'clock as appointed procedure.
Okay.
And I believe we're now well beyond that, so.
Okay, so we're at the very end of our agenda, wrapping up G and moving to H. We have a few people that should sign up to talk. But we could also just end the meeting now. Is there a motion to continue the meeting?
I think a motion to continue the meeting.
Second? Motion and second, any discussion? Hold it a favor, six of us saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Extensions, motion carries? So turning back to potential expenditure cut, number five, discontinuing a special contract with sheriff's office for policing. Any questions, comments, or discussion on that? Jeff?
So for eighty-six thousand dollars, is that right?
I think it's eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven in the projected budget.
Eighty-seven in the projected budget. We get twenty-four hours of coverage, of addition, of extra coverage. So with that, the question, I guess, has to be asked of county administrator and sheriff. If per capita crime statistics are different in different areas, why in the philosophy of community policing are they not delegating different assets and resources to deal with those problems? And why are we paying for extra funding? And why are we paying for extra funding if we already in fact are, have our property taxes that are paying for that? So does this then subsidize another deputy for the department to keep that, keep that person on? And if that contract was taken away or reduced, how would that affect their overall operations and their budget this year? But the other part of that is, when I look at these calls for service, it doesn't paint the picture of what you get in 24 hours and what you get in normal coverage. It doesn't paint that picture of that. I mean, you could pull up Cayman data and see when the deputy's assigned to work and what he's doing, what he's not doing. But that data can be skewed if you go out and just generate calls for service, whether it's calls for service or it's actual calls that are generated by self-initiated activity. So that's the question I have. And what would we get if we didn't have that extra 24 hours of coverage? With crime going down, part one crimes are going down, part two crimes are staying steady. So when you have that, what does the sheriff have to say about that? And have you had that conversation with Dave Meriwether? And I also ask you to look towards Wasco County. How are they able to provide services to the outlawing areas and not have an extra surcharge to provide that service? Some, Clark County in Happy Valley has a special service district that was voted on by the voters. It's a levio's passed, and that's how they get that deputy or Wilsonville does the same thing. This isn't quite the same, it's not as equitable as that special service district. So that's the confusion that I look at when I'm looking at these calls for service and what they actually are generating. So did you ask Wasco County?
I have not had a chance to get any information back from Wasco County. Some counties in the state, they're going from six deputies in a county down to four and not having a jail open. And so everybody's all over the board on this. Where this usually crops up is if the council decides, we can't afford this anymore. So instead of spending eighty-seven, we're only going to spend fifty. And then you get yourself in that discussion that you're talking about.
Brad?
You said they'd close the jails or they give the prisoners parole days or what stuff?
Yeah, they buy jail space in some other county.
Oh, okay. Contract out, like Josephine County is going through the big...
Josephine, Coos, Clana.
I think our conversations with the county, with the sheriff is that if you went under the eighty-seven thousand helps pay for that deputy, you go anywhere under that, it doesn't fund that deputy, they lose that deputy, basically. We lose him, and the county, and the county loses him. So that's where they came up with a number that they believe they could hang on to that, hang on to that deputy. And that's where they come back to us on, is that if you go below that, they pull him.
But I guess the question you have to ask, why would they pull that deputy or pull law enforcement coverage from taxpayers that live within the county? That's the question.
Because they don't have enough money.
Do you have something to add to that?
This is years old, and I don't want to defend Joe, but, Wompler, but, you know, years ago, we had the same conversations. And one, the sheriff wouldn't refuse to provide service if we didn't fund a deputy. But he couldn't guarantee when they would respond, under what circumstances. I think they prioritized the crimes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and this and that. So, I mean, it would be trial by fire. It ain't like you can kind of try it. You're either going to be in or you're going to be out, like Tom said. And, you know, I heard somebody say, you know, our crime rate is high here compared to the rest of the county. And so I would hesitate, even though it may be expensive giving that up. And although we're contracted for 24 hours of service, we usually get more than 24 hours of service from the sheriff. And more than one deputy for situations. So, I don't know, it's a tough, tough call, but I wouldn't be anxious to look at that as a cussing.
Jeff, but I guess in the management of a department, if you have citizens that are sitting there, if you have disparate crime rates, why then through policy or through deployment of assets and resources, would you not try to suppress crime and fear crime through the deployment of the officers? Yeah, it's a large area to cover, but you have to look at that and are we actually getting value for this? That's the question. I think it needs to be, it needs to be an open discussion with the sheriff's office and with the county commissioners, what impact that has. And are our citizens, they're already paying tax warrants, do we have to tax them again? As another citizen talked about, the double taxation, all these things like that we're talking about. If that door's open, let's ask, let's have a conversation about that, what we get, what we don't. And is it a policy issue and a deployment of resources, I guess, is what it boils down to.
I think that there's, you know, there's certainly a fear about, well, what would happen if we ended that contract with the sheriff's department? You know, and we asked that question a couple of years ago to the sheriff of Wompler. And his question was, oh, I don't know. I mean, I don't know how we'd be able to respond. We'd have to, I think the comment was we'd matrix it out, and do you know what that means?
Prioritize it, you have priorities, hot incidents to your non-progress crimes, vandalism or something.
Yeah, so...
Get somebody out later on or give a phone report.
So I mean, I think there's certainly that fear about, well, what would happen? But that's a, that's a pretty significant chunk of our general fund that's going to the River County right now to pay for that service. Whereas a community like Odell, Parkdale Incorporated, isn't paying that. And they're getting, they're getting patrols from the sheriff's department for the same property tax they're paying, so.
But we don't know how frequent or what, you know, we don't know what they're getting.
Right, yeah, but what we've been told is we wouldn't be getting regular patrols if we ended this contract. And we know that they are.
And honestly, I think since we are paying, I think there is an intent to try and be as responsive, more responsive to our community than they might be to, I mean, I don't want to do a lot of laundry here, but I've had the police in my house over the last 10 years pretty often. And I've had more than one. And not that I'm into criminal activity, it wasn't that kind of a deal that I've got caught at, but I can say that they've been very, very supportive and responsive on numerous occasions and handled the situation very appropriately, so.
And I would just say to everybody that I've seen come down, and the ones we have right now, really works hard to try to get a feel of the community, try to get a feel of what's going on there, what the issues are, who has... And they just don't come down and just hang out. They're really trying to get a feel for what's going on here and where they can help. So it is pretty important to have them, and they work pretty hard at it.
I did just kind of want to draw that comparison, though, between what we are paying for that, which I think people feel good about. You guys are right, the response time and having to be part of the community and stuff. It's essentially the, you know, straight across the same revenue piece out of our general fund that we just created with internal payments and various suppression fees. So roughly, you know, eighty-seven, eighty-eight thousand dollars there. So you could replace one for the other. I mean, it's a tough choice to make. Do you want fire or do you want police? But if you do have that potential, I mean, you could look at it like that. Well, because we're paying for one, we do have to pay for the other. We can't, we can't get both. We have to figure out a way to pay for both services. And I think the bottom line is, if the community do want emergency services, both from policing services as well as from ambulance and medical emergency services and fire. So, I mean, I think that's an important comparison that people should pay attention to as you compare these things.
Last comment I'd make, comment I'd make again, is I think it's even more important from, you know, the debates that went on for the sheriff, where it was said that they could no longer afford a narcotics investigator. And I think having, you know, some kind of degree of dedicated presence here contributes to deterring, the problem being perhaps getting worse. So that's another tangent.
Is this going to get started 24 hours? Hurry up, get it over.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion about that? Counsel interested in pursuing this option?
Not this time.
Okay. Eliminating the position of full-time city administrator, I don't know how that stuck onto the options, but... Maybe the city administrator wrote this. Any comments, questions about this? Okay, any interest in pursuing this as an option?
Well, sure.
Not at the moment. Could be, but not at the moment.
I mean, we're living that way today, right? And as little as Paul does, it seems to be able to move us forward. So, you know, if we had Paul or somebody he would endorse, then it would be worth considering.
You're talking about doing a part-time? This says eliminate the position.
Eliminate the full, administrate full-time, I assume, going to a part-time.
And again, man, this always gets on there because I think you owe it to yourself to be looking at every possible way to make cuts. I think with, given the staff people that you have, you could make a darn good argument about how you could operate without a city administrator. And that only works until the claim hits. And then you don't want to have these people have to deal with the claim.
Right.
But I think it's something that you have to look at. Do we actually need it or what can we do? There's some communities that converted them to a combination of recorder, clerk, finance director. And oh, by the way, you're going to be the city administrator too. So there's a lot of different ways of doing that. It depends on what your tolerance level is for expenditure and inconvenience.
Okay. Is there any counsel interested in pursuing this option? Okay? Oh? Sure.
Not at the moment.
No?
I don't run that about.
Any word looking into, yeah?
So there's a consensus to pursue this option? Contract out for all services? That's the fire existing employees, grant a side or back, but then a lower rate option.
Or turn them into little companies of their own. Usually that works out to about a fifteen to twenty percent cost reduction for the city. So you take somebody and you say, Mary Ann, you go form your own company and we'll contract with you for eighty-five percent of what we used to pay you, and then we'll hire you to do that work.
Gail?
Again, I'm back in private business, but I've never had a contract arrangement that cost me less. Now, maybe you know in cities that can happen, but I don't know that Mary Ann would take a twenty percent cut to do the same work.
And I'm not trying to put words in her mouth, Mark's saying she would, but that's...
Not her or anybody else, I don't know where they would say, oh, yeah, boy, I want to be a contractor and pay my own benefits, cent less. I just don't, I'm not for that one.
Yeah, I was here in the seventies. So, yeah, we found that, what I can recall is, you start having issues with them. So now you're, you know, all of a sudden they're going, hey, you're asking me more than what the contract is. You want me to do this, you want me to do that? Then they start going, when you're not doing all the stuff that I did in the contract for them, okay, now I need to ask for more money, you know? They start out with a contract here, and then before you know it, the contract doubles. It creates, it creates lots of issues, and that's why, and that's why we don't have contractors here. That's why they're away. You just have all those different things going on. You start getting upset with them, and they get upset with you, and then you get all kinds of... That's my experience that I've seen.
Okay, anyone else interested in pursuing this? Okay, the next one is to reduce city staff to a minimal level of service, eliminate positions. Questions or comments about this?
I wish we should look at it. I mean, that's what, that's what we always do, the whole thing, you know, is that...
Is that, that was going to be part of the work rate or work study program, workflow, and all that, that audit you were talking about, having...
Right, that could come out of that, as well as salary study, yeah.
Yeah, look at it, yeah, look at the, you have to look at that, so.
And that's already planned to do that?
It's in the proposed budget for next year of the current staffing level.
But looking at the work study to, you know, potential efficiency?
There's a number, and there's a number of issues that are going to crop up for you over the next couple of years. And one of them is, it's time to bring somebody in from the outside and figure out, are we charging the appropriate level of administrative overhead to the operating departments? And it's been a while for that. You need a salary study here, so that should be a part of it. So it's a lot of pieces of that that need to be taken care of in next year's budget.
Anyone else interested, we've heard three people that are interested in pursuing that? Okay, yes, Mark?
I wouldn't do anything until the study, you know, until I see the study.
Okay. So, ready?
Just, yeah, same as Mark, working out with the study.
So combining that with the work study and the job study, we are interested in pursuing that.
I got a question about that.
Yeah?
When you talk about the work study, I think we did one years ago, and it was a time-in-motion type study. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Okay, the activity, how long they took, and how those should be allocated, and then you get a summary report of...
That takes us to disincorporate the city. Any questions, comments about that?
After tonight, it might not be a bad idea.
Any council members interested in pursuing that option? Okay, no? Okay, so just to kind of review here, we've looked at a list of nine potential cost-cutting measures. We've already taken action on one of them, which was cost sharing with employees on health insurance. We're interested in pursuing a continued study on city staffing levels through the process of a work study and salary study. It's part of the current budget. And then also the city administrative position, we're interested in pursuing that. Good?
Thank you.
Okay, other council questions or comments about expenditure cuts?
The only thing I would suggest at some point, maybe after the first year, whenever we have a new sheriff, is that he does come and have a conversation with not only the council but with the public to explain. He should explain the advantages of us having a deputy versus some of the other scenarios that have been described.
Okay, last item on our extra agenda here is potential action regarding the use of city property fees. This comes to us from our budget committee discussions. Paul, you were going to give a brief overview of this.
Right, that particular discussion focused on the streets department, and that cost that was allocated to streets was about four thousand dollars.
You're talking about the five percent, or what are we talking about?
It's the use of property, what's the title, Mary Ann?
Property use fees.
Property use fee. So that's the charge to rent space, store your materials, use the maintenance yard.
So then the question being, is that something that we'd like, that we would continue to charge the streets fund? Or would we discontinue charging the streets fund? So I understand that the policy is that we charge... So I understand that the policy says that we charge that of the enterprise funds. The street fund is not an enterprise fund. And it's in our budget to charge them. Gail? Before before we get into council discussion, Gary did sign up to talk.
Okay.
Yeah, Gary Monkauf, I'm a resident of Cascade Locks. I have a couple of points regarding the fees versus taxes and whether they're legislative or administrative. And the attorney pointed out that administrative fees, such as copies charged or meter fees or whatever, are normally administrative. This issue was brought up after the initiatives were passed with the other attorney that we had. And it was after some discussion, public discussion, it was brought out that there is nothing in the ORSs that prevents a city from declaring what fees they want to be administrative and what fees they want to be legislative. And the people of Cascade Locks voted to make them all legislative. So therefore, this is what they are. And that may not be the normal course of other cities, but this is what the citizens of Cascade Locks voted to do. And they want to keep control of all taxes, fees, and charges. They voted on it, it was passed by a majority. So what you are doing tonight is illegal. It's against our charter. So are you prepared for the repercussions that can happen? In other words, as I look at it, when you send me these new payments, these new fees on my bill in July, I'm not obligated to pay them. You did it against the charter. The charter says you will bring it to me for a vote. You refused to do that. So are you prepared for a boycott of the citizens? A majority of the citizens voted to do this. This is what they want. Now you're going against that. There will be repercussions. Have you taken that into account? What if the fees don't come in? What if citizens boycott them? What are you going to do? I know I'm prepared to go to court. It's that simple. The attorney was not here during these discussions. This is what was brought out publicly. This is what the people voted on. This is how it was determined to be the intent of what they voted on. You don't have the right to change that without a vote. We will defend our vote. So I hope you understand what you're doing. And I would I I would hope you would change your mind and do what the citizens want. The last thing the city needs is to have enemies between the citizens and city council. And this is what you're doing. This isn't just a disagreement. You are making enemies. If that's your intention, fine, we have no problem. We will handle it. My second point is, you are very aggressive on raising fees to get us out of this financial problem. You've been in business, you know that the other side of the coin is you cut costs. I see nothing aggressive about your attempt to cut costs. You sat here and defended what the union contract is and that you can't open it. And this may be true. But there's nothing to keep you from changing what your non-union employees contribute to their own benefit packages. No discussion whatsoever. Think it over. Do your job. You're here to represent us. You're not here to defend staff. You're not here to listen to a few people. You're here to support the citizens. Nobody wants these fees that you're bringing in. So think it over.
Okay, so going back to the use of city property fees and potential action on that, is there an interest on council in in changing that as a as a policy initiative? That we charge, we currently charge streets use of city property?
Yeah, although we should. Again, streets only get sixty thousand dollars from the state. That's all they get. And and it's to help you, it's a gas tax thing, I got two months, it is a gas tax thing that says, here's sixty thousand for you for the town to do the best best you can with. But it's it's highway taxes, it's like gas, highway, whatever it is. But it's to try to help streets. That's what it was going to, was the streets. So streets should, and because streets is not an enterprise fund, they shouldn't be hit up for it. You look around at our streets. Our streets have to, you know, have some problems, and we're we're able to go to the state for for some of that, but you can't go to the state for for all of it. And the state's going to say, hey, you know, we would give it to somebody, you know, take care of the potholes or patch them up or 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 save up enough money to fix them. But street is another, but street is another thing that we're using out there just as a as a small cash cow to keep everything else to keep everything else going. We're taking the money from the state to do everything else going, as far as I'm concerned. The property fee is, as I understand it, for enterprises, that's what it should be, is in the enterprises. So I'm for figure it out, so.
I I will be even the night. I agree with Tom. One, if it's not covered by the ordinance, then I don't think we should charge it. And if it is literalized as enterprise funds and streets don't fall into that, then I do not believe we should charge it.
Jeff?
Tom and you.
Jeff? Other questions or comments? Are you going to need a motion to to make that change in the budget policy?
Yes.
Is there a second? Motion by Gail, second by Tom. Question, comment, or discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All is a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions?
Did you say what the motion was for?
The motion to was to change the policy of charging the street fund city property fees.
To not charge them.
So the the street fund would no longer be charged city property fees. So motion passes. We did we did just go through public comment.
Oh, you just allowed someone else to talk. And I just wanted to point out that you didn't read the very last paragraph of the staff's recommendation. I'd like that written correctly if you could.
Are you talking about the use of city property fees?
I'm talking about the staff recommendations, the last paragraph in the document.
Are you talking about, we're on use of city property fees, item H.
Without city community understanding trust and faith, all of these issues will be extremely difficult. And he suggests including the community to actively be involved in determining the direction that it wants to go. That's the paragraph.
Okay, next item on our agenda is adjournment. Do we have a motion? Second? Motion and a second? Jeff made the motion, Gail made the second. All is a favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, abstentions, motion carries.